Yeah, so we're gonna call them. The R M L D can't.
Okay, and so having called the board commissioners to order, we're here at the lovely Wilmington High School. Thank you, Dennis, for building such a beautiful high school. The meeting is being audio recorded. I'll remotely on Cleveland last year about our CTV. Harmal D Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment to discussion with chair on items on the agenda. Once recognized by the chair, all persons addressing the board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It's the role of the chair to maintain order in all cases. So are any, yeah, Pam, you want to just say hello that you're you're participating remotely?
Yes, I'm here and participating remotely. Hi, everyone.
Great, and all votes must be taken by a minimum call. Well, I think that's it then. You ready to get started? Any any comments, please, on the board?
Sure, I'll make a quick comment, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you. So Karen Herrick, Vice Chair of the Reading Select Board. So I couldn't be there in person. I have not yet been in New Wilmington High School. I'd love to someday. But I did want to just update you all briefly on the progress we're making with our Killen School Design and thank Greg and Molly and Ray for their advocacy because, you know, this really is a transformational project for Reading and it it is not something we have done before and we very much need your expertise and your partnership to really, you know, achieve the net zero goals that we have. And so last night, so I understand that Greg met with the superintendent and the town manager last week and I appreciate that effort to really talk about these projects and and what we're envisioning and our designers are fully on board and special thank you to Molly O'Keefe and your IRD department for, you know, maintaining the continuity in this project and speaking with the designers to talk about, you know, what are the right options for the school going forward and we had a terrific presentation last night and Ray, this won't be news to Ray because he's seen it coming. We both saw it last July, but again, what seems to be an economical and efficient and a clean and a healthy type of system for this new building is looking like either, well, full geothermal still comes out as very efficient, but a partial, a partial geothermal. And and the reason that a partial geothermal is looking pretty good and and the great news is that we do believe we can fit it on the site is that in addition to the school building, a minis- uh, the school building MSBA reimbursement, we can have enough wells to qualify for another thirty percent reimbursement from the federal government under the Inflation Reduction Act. So so that's very exciting and we'll be continuing to move along this continuum as we design, but just wanted to thank you again and give you an update and and kudos to all the great support we've been getting from you all.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question about that?
Please, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, yeah, Pam Daskelakis. So just a question around, you talked about the geothermal, which is great. Solar wise, how are we looking in terms of that as part of the design?
So we haven't seen them on the design yet, so I did meet with town manager last, this week to, our town manager, to really ask him to make sure that those are on the conceptual drawings. There is room for, the question that was asked in July was how much, how many kilowatts could this site support? And battery backup. So we have the roof and we have the opportunity for solar parking structures. So I don't have that answer yet, but we did have a deadline to sort of get our building design to the MSBA, so that's out of the way. It's looking very positive. So now the renewed focus will be upon, you know, really making this HVAC decision. And and this needs to be a part of that at this time. So that's why rooftop solar, parking lot solar, battery backup generator versus a gas power generator would be ideal.
And Greg, of course. Yeah, and Greg, I assume that that's part of the conversation you're having with, in terms of the engagement?
Yeah, and back within the capital budget as well, yes.
Oh, excellent. Okay, thank you.
Right?
Yeah, to follow up on Pam's question, a couple of things that I would, that I, from the solar side that I'd like to see on the numbers that are being presented to the school committee are some savings. Since we're going geothermal, that means we're going electrification, that means that the monies that would be offset by solar panels should be in that economics, whether the solar panels are owned by R M L D or a third party or how that's managed. It might be outside of the school budget, but the economics should be in there. And so I realize that that's, you know, right now, we probably have a crude footprint and so that will give us a crude estimate of how many panels that will be and that'll give us a crude estimate as to what the energy potential is. But right now, we're not showing the full benefit of what being germ of geothermal means with solar because that we have huge savings ongoing and that should be reflected in it because I think when the arguments for those on the building committee that are looking at traditional power systems, you don't really understand the full benefit of geothermal if you don't understand how it pairs with solar. So I'd like to see there are a couple of places in their estimates that solar would fit in terms of being beneficial. So I'm looking for a final design, but we should start getting some of those numbers into the economics.
Yeah, agreed.
Yes.
Um, so that's enough topic here, but so one of the things when we've looked at solar with brain light is because of the twenty year power purchase agreement, we can't get another power purchase agreement with someone to do solar unless running light, it's the solar. When you, because you're part of Reading, would that mean if you put it up there that they get the benefit of the solar? Or is the power purchase agreement the same with Reading? That if they don't buy the solar panels outright, that then it would be the power would go to Reading Light.
There's, there's three different models. There's, there's a model where, which is what we have in place right now in three installations where a third party, basically we put the system in place and Reading buys the power off of that system via PPA. There's a second scenario where the building owner, the school in this case, could own the panels, could own the array. And then they could reduce the amount of energy that they use and then whatever's overspent would basically be purchased by R M L D of the excess. And then there's a third scenario where R M L D owns the asset and they basically pay a lease payment to the building owner to lease the space on the rooftop of the.
But then that wouldn't cut the cost for the geothermal. So we're in the process of building a school right now and we're talking, we haven't got to it yet. The next phase, we'll talk about geothermal, but they're putting solar panels on the, which, one of the whole, one of the things holding Wilmington back has always been the power purchase agreement because unless we buy the solar panels outright, I thought we couldn't.
Well, I, I mean, there's, there's, it'll fit under those three models, but I think we'll do, that's what we do at the Parker School. We'll do that. We'll do a little more detailed analysis on the Killen School and we'll do, and we have in the capital budget for Wilmington's site as well, but we'll look, we'll look at the three different scenarios. The, and the school owner, the school board in this case, can decide which one they would like us to pursue, but yeah, so it's gonna be an economical decision.
Yeah, I want to throw a little ways away. I just want to sort out because it's something I want to throw in our meetings when we're talking about geothermal and, you know, and trying to save some money. It's a kind of expensive building without basic kind of costs.
Um, you, you mentioned battery backup on the, on the generator. Are there any restrictions on batteries related to schools? Not that, not, you know, I'm not aware of, you know, insurance changes everything, right, before. But, you know, when you, when you go down and are looking at the size of the battery and the type of battery, you know, I, I would, I would investigate what the technology is and especially being in the proximity next to a school, right? It sounds like it's a good idea, but this, I think this practical aspects of of it being in, in a, in a school zone.
Based on the chemistry.
Yeah, based on the chemistry, right? It, it, it just, it would be something that you, you would need to investigate or have approved. I, I don't know, Dennis, do we have any experience with batteries in schools at all?
Not yet.
Yeah.
So if I may, I did see one installation at one of the newest Watertown Elementary Schools, you know, you, we are always concerned about safety, but we are starting to see them pop up. And and it may not be the only backup, although one school had a couple of UPSs to help with servers and and that's it. And I was kind of surprised at that, but at the Watertown Schools, we saw one, one large battery outside one of the elementary schools.
I mean, there's, there's another scenario where we do a micro grid and the battery system might not be particularly close to the school. That might be a provision for it as well. So there's a couple of different options, but I, those, I think the caution is good. It's important to think about it. Yeah, sure, and safety perspective, and as Karen mentioned, you know, the goal is to make this as net zero as possible. Thank you, Karen. Any other public comment? So we can move on. So I think we are to the.
So the cap needs to appoint the vice chair and well, third, I'm left the district. Okay, so I've discussed this with Ken in the previous, so I move that we appoint Tim Woods as the vice chair of the R M L D's advisory board to be effective immediately after the vote.
My second one?
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Uh, any, yeah, any other nominations?
Are you in both?
Now, it's your own fault. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. One comment there. It occurs to me that, you know, we have this power supply load committee that we haven't, that hasn't been active, but with, with Ken's departure, you're also down a member of that committee. So should that, should the chair of that committee, Pam, when we call a meeting, you would be one sure. So I, I should have thought of that before.
And that was only determined that it was Ken because Vivek already was in Reading and we're trying, is that the one I'm thinking of? Is this a different one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So we have, I know, I know I'm on, I'm on nine committees right now, so I know I can't do a tenth. So would actually be, either one of you two would be part of that.
Do you want to, do you want to mention, is it okay to, if they want to do it tonight, is it okay to do it?
Or do we just put it, maybe we make it a, actually. Check for the next one, but I think that's, maybe you can find it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts on it, Pam?
I would love to have an additional person in the event that we do. I'm, I'm fine to wait until the next meeting and I do agree that we should have somebody from representing outside of Reading, so happy to have either one of the two candidates.
And I don't think the, the lack of a mentor would prove it because he's still not informed, but anyway. Yeah.
I'm still thinking, next one.
Yeah.
Hey, Jason, how can you reach Andy? So go ahead. Second nominee.
Your minutes.
Okay, oh, yeah. Okay, so all right, so the next item is a two of the cap meeting minutes. So I'll read the motion, move that the R M L D's advisory board approve the June 2024, June 20 is 2024, open session meeting minutes. As presented on the recommendation of the general manager and the board.
Second.
Okay. All right, David.
All right. All right, so we, our motion, Phil, do you want to read that motion?
Read that motion. First time, I'd love this, great. This must be great to watch football.
Where was it so good to leave my ass?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
All right, who were the R M L D Board of Commissioners? Approved January fifth, two thousand twenty four, January fifth, but try again, June fifth, two thousand twenty four. And June twentieth, two thousand twenty four, open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the general manager and the esteemed board.
Esteemed. At the motion, just to remove the word esteemed. Do we say?
The second.
All up there? All right, we have to roll call.
Yeah.
All right, guys.
Mr. Over in, Ray Porter, I.
Top of, and motion carries five oh.
Yeah, university minister, you've got a lot of stuff in, she actually some of the presentations.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very innovative, that must admit.
The next item is a update on the charter review.
Yeah, so basically that's, I'm going to represent the charter review. We basically are looking potentially to update the charter, which is required every ten years under the, under the charter. And basically there are a whole series of people from different, representing different boards, spoken to, even like those um, the, the board of select, the board of select, the select board, excuse me, select board. So basically, we're reviewing the charter. A lot of things we're doing is, we're changing things like, you know, we have him and her, so we have to make it more new, more gender neutral. And that's a big thing we're doing on that. But in terms of what we're doing with the R M L D is which the, basically we've made presentations to kind of bring it in line with the, with chapter one sixty four. Because right now the charter is not in line with chapter one sixty four. And we're attempting, we're in, in conformity with that. Those are the members that you see here, but that are in, in the package at this point. So that's really the the justice of what we're trying to do now, whether or not to change anything, the charter commission is going to meet again on Wednesday. At this point, I cannot make that meeting. I'm out of state on that night, so I am, I've asked the chair to push it, push it back to the meeting. I've not heard back from him at this point. So I've asked Greg to stand in my stead at this point and make our presentations at this point. So we'll see where we go, where we go from there, okay?
Uh, do you, do you want to discuss the substance of what the changes are that have been?
No, just, we're trying to bring it into conformity with chapter one sixty four. Between what's now in the charter and then what's, what's chapter one sixty four, one sixty four six. I mean, there are things like, you know, the charter, the charter says we have to adopt the junior end. We don't do that at this point. We've gone to a December year end, which matches what we have reported to state at this point. Are there references to the, to positions that don't exist anymore? At this point, in terms of what we've got at that point? And, you know, there's things, you know, that we're trying to, the memo says we actually can change, you know, try to move away from having the town do right, which I, I don't think we should do, not recommended, but we don't accept that to the, to the charter commission. At that point, having the town, having the towns auditor used to, uh, here I'm up there. Mr. Mr. Pips and I just speak on that. At this point, we're, we're trying to get away from, I think it's thirty four B, thirty, thirty B, thirty B. Because then we're helping in terms of power, uh, power certain, the power purchases. Where some of these power contracts are not, you know, not going up to bid, you have only certain periods of time to do them. So those are the kind of things we're looking to do at this point.
So I think we appointed you a year ago, right?
Right, yeah.
And then, I don't, I don't recall that we've had any updates any, in the past year to this board, right, that we are.
We haven't, but there's been nothing, nothing to update at this point. Everything is, 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 nothing has changed. I mean, if you want me to tell you what, what, you know, some of the wording changes, some of the other charter sections, I can certainly tell you that to them, but in terms of the R M L D thing, no, nothing has been changed at all at this point in charter.
Well, there's been some, okay, how about we, can we just take a minute to go look at what the documents are, they're pretty voluminous. If we could just put up the actual charter section three point five from the board book.
But that's a markup.
It is, it is a markup, but there's nothing really in our section yet.
Is, is the intent to be sharing the, on the Zoom?
It's on Zoom, yeah.
Okay, I can see it now, thank you.
So section three point five is the only, I think the only part of the charter that deals with our board.
Right.
And this is, this is kind of one of the North Stars in addition to chapter one sixty four, as you said. So if you want to zoom in on that a little bit, it's short, I think it's worth us just looking at it. It's the first bit says, there's five of us, in creative terms, we knew that. Says we have powers and duties granted by chapter one sixty four and then other general special acts. And then further powers and duties assigned to us by the charter, town bylaw, or town meeting vote. So yes, chapter one sixty four governs us, but so too, according to our charter, are such further powers and duties assigned to them by the charter, town bylaw, or town meeting vote. It says we hired the GM. It says we set the GM's duties and tariffs of employment. And the next paragraph says, we shall appoint an accounting manager or a chief of accounting. And it says that we, as the board, shall account, appoint counsel. That's what the charter says. We did, the, the board of commissioners appoints counsel.
And, but which, which we agree with, that does not, that does not agree with chapter one sixty four.
But, right, there's one of the memos said that. So the next one disagrees. So I think it's important to just understand that this, this goes to the heart of what we do. Okay, and so then it says that the accountant and the council shall be sent there to the supervision of the general manager. And so those, those are pretty significant statements there. And then it says we approve war as we do that. Keep going. Yeah. I think all this is, we set rates. And as you said, there's a disagreement between calendar and fiscal year. I don't think any of that is. So that's, that's, that's it. That's what it says. That's what it says we do. That's what it says our board's powers are, right, in the charter. That's been in place for what, ten years now, right, or is it longer?
Well.
Twenty years?
Yeah, actually, the charter's been a long, it's been a charter.
Twenty years.
Some of this was, was put in, in that two thousand and one during the period of what was called the illness.
Right. So to correct some things, to add some governance, to make sure that things that happened in the past don't happen again.
Right, that's now, that's, you know, twenty three years ago. The, the, the general manager at that point is now fully retired, living in Florida.
Sure.
At this point, I seriously doubt that situation ever going to occur again.
Okay, so now let's go to the first memo. There's two memos in the board book addressing proposed or not proposed changes to this language, which describes what are, what are duties and what are powers. First, the one, the coil memo. Fifteen, so did you guys have? Okay, well, it should.
Oh, Duncan, that one would be the first one.
Duncan Allen.
Yes, of course, this is written by John, not this one, yeah.
Okay, now I should explain the, the genesis of this memo. We actually had a, a previous, it was done by Ruben in Reading, but there was complaints from the committee, some committee members about that particular memo, because that firm at that time, they felt was very much in the, the general manager's corner. It depended him, so they discounted the use of that memo. So we went on, we authorized another member, wanted to get a help memo.
When you say, when you say you authorized, what do you want?
Well, I recommended that we go forward and get Duncan happy or get somebody else besides either K P or anybody to do, to do this memo.
So you recommended that to Greg?
I recommended that to Greg.
To Greg, the board was at the bottom. Okay, so let's, let's just go, basically this says, as Phil said, it says, we need to make this align with chapter one sixty four, which says certain things. Now, go ahead to the table of this one. This is a memo written in February. I guess Phil, from what Phil just said, he asked Greg to hire this guy. So now it's, keep going, the second, the third. So now it strikes out that we are, have anything to do with setting the general manager's duties. It said, it, it, it's in there now, but this memo would cut that. And the next one, whereas it's in there now, that it says we shall appoint an accounting manager and appoint counsel. This memo proposes to strike all of that. Okay.
Again, we.
I, I know, that's what this memo argues. This memo argues that chapter one sixty four is, is not aligned with it, so all of that should be cut out.
Right, please understand that none of this has been adopted.
No, I know, but this, this was put forward to the charter committee nine months ago. Um, proposing to cut all this language out and describe what our board's powers are according to the charter for the past.
And they basically rejected this at present time, but we still are.
Right, we still are going to do.
With the charter commission.
All right, so keep going. There's a little more deletions here. Okay, deletes that we shall employ, deletes all kinds of stuff. Deletes. Basically, it removes anything in the, it removes a lot of language in the charter that gives our board it removes five, I think, I think it's fair to say.
Well, we should have the power under one sixty four.
Okay, so then, let's go to the next.
Losing it then.
Okay, but it says we appoint accountant, it says we appoint a counsel. And it says we set the duties of the general manager. Those are pretty big items. All right, so.
We have the power under one sixty four.
All right, now here's the town attorney, right? The town attorney is Ivory and Free. I don't know, how did it come to be that Ivory and Free drafted this memo? Countering everything in the.
He would have to do with the Spanish charter.
Of the charter. All right, and now if you read this, which, I, it's a lot, but basically she goes point by point and takes apart Jean Quin. And if you just get to the end, she argues that there's lots of case law that says charters can conflict with state law, even though they do, and even though they're not supposed to. That appeals appellate courts have made case law saying that the charter is still valid.
Okay, but you don't understand that the, the charter commission has not seen.
Correct. But more, I think more significantly, our board has never seen any until tonight, so. So now Ivory Free basically says, even though, she, and she also notes that the Attorney General's office, which reviews charter revisions and reviews any town bylaws, the A G O reviews it and had no objection to this original charter. And that there's case law that states that even when charters conflict with state law, appellate courts have found that it's fine. She cites it, so you can all read this if you choose to, but Ivory is free. Tolls, as you see her final, that there is no reason to change the charter and its statements are correct and valid. And that any changes, she also says, the town can certainly amend the charter as requested by the light board. However, I don't believe our light board actually requested any of those changes, charter appointments. So, and she says that any changes to the charter of the town of Reading is a policy decision, not a legal decision. I think our board makes a policy as to the R M L D.
What do you want me to do?
Nothing, I'm, I'm just trying to.
What are we doing here?
I don't want you to do anything.
You know, you, you, you're basically appointing me as, as representative on this committee with the idea that the things with the, the charter lineup went down. None of this has been approved.
No, no, no.
The charter has, has, has not changed anything at this point.
Right, no, I'm not asking you.
We argue, you know, some of her points, because I believe some of the legal cases cited here are incorrect.
All, all, if, if anything I'm doing here, it's just to try to make our board aware of a very significant conversation happening about what powers our board does or does not have. All I'm doing is making sure our board understands that this discussion has been going on with a memo nine months ago, trying to remove language that gave us powers that we didn't know about.
We're not, we're not losing any power. We're not losing any power. I just agree with that.
Uh, it says we appoint the accountant and appoint counsel, but, and it says we set the duties, those are.
So, so Phil, you, you feel that the statements that are being dropped from the town charter are still available to us because they exist under the state law of chapter one sixty four, section fifty five.
That's correct.
So if we log reading through state code, we can go to one sixty five and, uh, one sixty four, uh, section fifty five and see if the things that our charter say are still, still there.
We could look at that. I think I've heard from various places that we can't appoint counsel. But this document says we can and that Ivory reads rebuttal to coil agrees with that we can.
Right, so that's, that's one power certainly that, that would be a loss. I, being the most junior member to the to the committee, the, the commission, Pam's got me beat by a few months. I hadn't seen it before. I wasn't aware of this. I wasn't part of the discussion planning, so I welcome, I welcome this presentation, not so much to undermine Phil's role and discussions on the charter, but I do, I do accept it and appreciate it and in that it's a discussion that's happening about our group and, and so that we can have. And and so that we can have any follow-up discussions with Bill or. Other people that may be a part of that commission of the powers that we have, so. I don't, Phil, I don't, I don't see this undermining your authority. I think it's communicating, communicating the board where things stand.
I I do want everybody to understand, yes, you see all these memos and all these things have been struck out of that line. But the charter commission has approved none of this. And in many discussions with them, they rejected it all.
Okay, that's.
You're like, say that, you know, he's been there some weeks too. They've rejected it all.
But but still the point. I think coming across is. There were. Changes to the charter. Suggested, right, and. Without the board all having some comprehension of what those. Changes were. And I, you know, I did, I just. From from that perspective. If, you know, we we all work together, you know, if if you're, you know, I think this is a great presentation, so now we're all aware. Um, but it's just one of those things that there was a change going on, because if it went to.
Let me ask, let me ask this question. Does the board want the to continue going forward with the change proposed?
I I think there might be some.
Stop the process right here now?
No, I think there might be some some alignments, like like you're saying, you know. The audit, I think, is we perform an independent audit, which is you continue an independent audit.
That's, I recommend that.
Yeah, one hundred percent.
We could use the town.
I think. The the other aspect of procurement is is uh, we have that down. I don't think there's any necessary changes. At this point, uh, contracts. Past history, you know, we we want to make sure that the board is engaged in contracts. If we have to act quickly, um, we've we've. Offered ourselves up to act quickly. Um, if we need to do something within a timeline, you know, we post it in two days, we execute it in two days. That's, we have to have that flexibility in order for you to do that deal. But we do need to be engaged in. Significant power contracts, because that's what happened previously. In the form of general manager, and that was, that was an issue. We made sure that we got engaged in that process. From that perspective, but I think there there is room for cleanup, for sure. But but, you know, I think we, it 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 requires a discussion before we before we do it, but I do think there there are things that do need to be amended.
Right.
Um. In my role as air pollution professional, um, quite often. States will look at their state rules and see whether they are consistent with the federal rules. Some states say, oh, no, we'll just go like whatever EPA says under this. Section of the Clean Air Act authority, and we'll just go with that, and. I think the suggested cleanup is of that type, where this is what the state says we will do. We will just follow by citation. That authority. It doesn't prevent the state then from changing that authority. And having it be something that is not. In the future, that is not there now. Other states have taken the approach that, yes, that's the governing authority, but. But a air district or a state and establishing its rules. Something that is different and maybe even conflicts with the federal guidance. And so I would advocate keeping the charter language as it's presented. In that it's a statement of what the town of Reading wants us to do. Within that framework, there's also authority that's given to us by the state that wants us to do. If the state should change its rule, and it can do that without any notice to us at any time about anything. We at least have the understanding of what the town wants us to do and the role the town wants us to play. So. I would want to preserve that authority, but not lose that authority. And. If. There's case law that supports that that conflict can exist and it exists all over the place and air rules. I would, I would like to see that authority changed.
I think Pam said that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so just a question, Phil, and you may have already said this, and I apologize if I missed it. What's the next step from here in terms of finalizing changes? Recognize that you said. These particular changes that were presented were are not currently part of. The proposal, but what's the timeline? Between now and kind of finalizing the charter changes and. In the context of that, do we, will we have an opportunity to kind of review the final recommended changes to? The charter before it's voted on? Okay. Okay.
So I, you know, that's what we decided at the meeting on Wednesday. Would be the next step at that point. It's got to go in front of town meeting. It has to be approved by town meeting, so they're looking to do that possibly for the April town meeting. At this point is where it's going at this point.
Okay, so this board will have an opportunity to review whatever the charter committee recommends as changes. Or even the proposed changes prior to the recommendation vote from the charter committee.
So, you know, I'm getting mixed messages here. I've been ready that you want me to stop and not change anything. Is that what the rest of the?
I won't, I won't take that in absolute sense, but I would. I would not like to lose all the language and only defer to state rule citation. Where it says we have certain. Roles and responsibilities, accountant, attorney, approve contracts. I think those those things. Are are things we want the town to say is is our very in our responsibility. Other, other things which are cleanup or or whatever, I I'm not saying no changes, but.
Yeah, I guess my my point, my point with my question was just trying to understand. The the communication process once there are recommended changes. I I I don't, I'm not going to opine on potential changes or not. I I think we just. Sounds like we just want an opportunity to understand what those proposed changes are before they're voted on by the charter committee. Um, and then so we can feel confident in. That we're. At least our our voice has been heard in terms of what goes to town meeting.
At the bottom of my question. Yeah, I would, yeah, I would agree. I think. That taking a step back from that, Pam and and everybody, is that we simply need a meeting to look at it. And say, what do we as a board, if any? Want for changes? And and it's rather than reacting to things that others are putting forward, let's have a meeting where we look at the language and we. We we make, we put forward if anything. Changes or not, and we and then we see what other people are recommending and take that into account. So there might be things in the coil memo that we would want, and there might be things. That we don't, or there might be things that aren't in anybody's memo that we would want to change. And we should just have a meeting to do that. And then and then suggest what we as a board and vote on what we as a board want to put forward to the charter meeting.
I'm. I agree with you in part. I that the part I agree with you is, at some point, if if our changes. Reach a point where they are proposed and being given serious consideration, we should have a meeting on it. But I think that's what the job we're giving Phil is. To interact with the the people and have having those discussions, and so I hope. Phil can hear our thoughts and. Use our thoughts today as his guidance going forward, but. Yeah, I'm I'm.
Yeah.
Comfortable having. Phil.
Me, me too.
Continue to continue to play that role.
I I am too. I just think it it will lose us to take a position of what, if any changes do we as a board want and put them through, uh, put them forward through Phil. To bring forward as committee member to the committee. So that we we rather than being absent from the discussion, reacting to things, we are trying to propose things. Yeah.
So, um, as a cab member. And I think what I see is that, you know, this is being treated as a reading decision. And I understand that the charter comes from Reading. But. From the overall. Cap community, I think. It also, you know, into decisions, I think, that's other community. So. Did you have any, I I just like, you know, I I think.
Maybe at some point, whether it's today or another time, if you want to. Make a comment. That would be perfectly appropriate for you to recommend to our board what you think, if any. Alterations should be made, but.
Yeah, no, no.
That people figure into what we as a board would say, that we vote on, that we think. Should be our position, and that goes through you Phil to the committee. I think that will be the without any comments.
But I had one, I think you were talking about hiring, you know, one of your responsibilities, hiring a lawyer. I I didn't hire a lawyer working for the town, but isn't that through an R and P process where there's a whole. Um, national law around hiring one, and you have to do it based on quality based. And experience based, uh, seal bid. Separate from their expertise, no?
Or is it?
Or is it different for a lawyer?
So this is a legal issue, and there's a lot of material. So I think it's a yes or no. It does, what does you? I don't speak to the legal issues or the lawyers speak to legal issues, but one of the things that is. Different about R and L D is that the majority. Of our vote is outside of our territory. So. The next comment that the C A B. Should have some comment into our commissioners, I think is a good one.
And 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 I would just report, if we have a discussion. Outside this meeting of. I think, you know, we'd be.
Bring it back.
We'd be happy to participate in that, and then, you know, just, I think a joint meeting is most effective.
So the government meeting is a joint meeting, so let's.
So if we can do it that way, I I think it's a good process in my.
I agree.
And very good. And the other thing about master of law, and you talk about one sixty-four or whatever the most. Um, I know in most laws. You can have follow the law, or you can be more stringent, or have. Votes to change things to a district, but it has to be approved by the majority. Um, so I'm not sure how that would fall in here. And it'd be nice to see the comparison, because that was the first time I really thought about this. Like, Phil, you say that this. This the stuff you're taking out matches what's in the other law in the law. Is there a way to show that side by side in the screen that shows, okay, I'm taking it out of the charter, but. You can see it in this law, so it still exists with the board having power. Because, you know, that may eliminate some of the concern, and I'm not saying if they are not there.
Because we can put that into.
So if it's there already, it may alleviate some things, and if it's not, you may want to keep something that. Instead of getting on power.
Yeah, so. And taking a way step back, there's a lot of different models for how light plans are governed. Some are separately elected boards like us. Some of the boards appointed by the town manager. Some, it's simply a department of the town, like, I think it's. And you're not.
You're not.
And we're standing. Yeah, but and and completely different.
We have a light board supporting by the town manager, while we are a department of the town.
Yeah. And I think in Norwood, they don't even.
Or similar. Similar, it's a little bit different, but similar. Pretty similar.
But but the Greg equivalent question would be a staff to the town manager, and that's how it is in. Denver, too, right?
That's right.
In Denver's, the manager reports to the town manager, right?
Yes.
There's many different flavors of this, and then we're we're one of the ones that's independent, separate, elected. And so this charter is it's important, so I think, bottom line, I think you guys should let us know if you have anything. I think we should meet. We should maybe each of us, if you have change, you review these memos. Maybe send.
Yes.
If we have proposed thoughts or changes, we should aggregate them, or we should have a meeting, or we should vote on what we as a board think. If anything, the charter, the viewing committee should think about. Because right now, the Ivorya Free memo says the light board wants those cuts to be made. But that's all I'm saying, the light board has never. Seen this. Much less made that statement, but that's what the town attorney thinks that we did.
If you want to do it on the.
Yeah, probably, or maybe we do it before, there's a reason. The timetable of the committee. But yes. We'll, let's take that off again.
See what happens on Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Because the free members not being reviewed by the committee.
No, 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 right, right.
That memo is, you know, you'll go to the the meeting on Wednesday.
It's not.
No, it's not, the committee has not seen that number, you know.
Yeah, by the way, I stumbled on all this because I literally, but I did. Let's move on. Okay. Thank you for the discussion, and thanks for. Great. Um, so this will just spend a really quick five minutes to let me jump into the charter, but. As we did last year, it was appropriate just to do a quick, quick overview of some of the key elements. Um, of our our strategy. That will impact how we prioritize the budget items. Um, you guys had a chance to see these, I'll go through this in much more detail. You guys know the mission really, real clearly, reliable low cost, not carbon. Um, I'll jump to slide.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah. That's general contents, actually. You go back. Yeah. Slide. So at the bottom there, last four bullets, um, the third one to the bottom. R and L D needs land parcels and the service territory to support the network build out to support load demand growth. So you're going to see a significant part of the budget being land. Um, the other two are very important. They're all important, air data analytics, but also the teamwork as well. But land is going to be a key part of the. Budget. Um. Key masses on. Great. Uh, let's go to slide seven, quick. Um, again, we focus on reliability. That's the first part of it. Um, we're doing a particularly good job on that. That's a team effort all the way around. Um, we're going to go next to. Slide twelve. Okay, on slide twelve, um, one, two, three, so in the middle of there, maximize in territory solar PV. Um. And expand time of use as A M I and M D M are deployed. So both of those, um, there's a lot of other materials here, obviously, but the in territory, we talked about that at the very beginning with Karen. Don't focus on a piece of it. But a lot of this land and the associated projects tied to it are focused on in territory solar generation. Um, so that's, you're going to see that, uh, uh, predominantly in the budget. And then we'll talk about the A M I system as well. So those are the, those are the big pieces that I wanted to walk through, and then. Uh, obviously, in terms of in territory generation, that second lineup, solar PV at approximately thirty megawatts more. If we can do more, we will. Um, but it's limited by land. And then the very last, you can see again, um, slide sixteen. Um, the prioritization in terms of, uh, in terms of kind of thinking about key initiatives. Land is a near term item and is consistent with the discussion we had back in the earlier part of this year. Um, gold fine land. Um, we will talk. In next Monday morning's meeting with a little more detail in terms of the land, there's a lot of work to. There's a lot of material to review. There's a lot that we have done. But, um. Any questions on the big picture strategy? Land is a key piece of it, and in territory generation is not a key piece of. Any questions? Because we'll jump into the the budget, which is where the. Questions?
Greg, this is Pam, just, uh, just wanted to confirm twenty thirty to twenty thirty-five, that build generation, that's the geothermal?
Um, ideally, well, um, yes, it it would. Right now, we envision it being geothermal. Um, it is still a technology that is not yet. Commercialized to a point where we would adopt it. Um, but that's the, that's the thought process, is to do something in the twenty thirty, twenty thirty-four, um, period as well. So yes. Yeah, our our view is, and for the rest of the group. You know. Different technologies, solar has its own unique capabilities. Um, you know, as who, as the subcommittee has walked through before. Um, you know, we like wind, we like hydro, but there's no real provisions for solar, for hydro or wind inside of our territory. Again, this is in territory, this particular. Section, um, there is place for solar. But the other mechanisms, whether it's geothermal, carbon capture fuel cell, hydrogen, who knows what else? Um, yeah, we we do have an opinion in terms of what's inside the box. But our real focus is what's the economics, what's the risk? Uh, you know, what's the the non-carbon element of whatever that system might be, and right now we're open to it. Um, so that's the. A little background, but yes, you're right, potentially geothermal in the early twenty thirties.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, and switch over. I do have to actually do a, so the solar progress is very exciting, Maple Meadows, State of Root, three five, those are awesome, and I'm. Really hoping that they they can have. So. I guess the big question there is, what is the opportunity within? Within the built environment, if you will, and and.
And.
Well, within the, like, using existing customers and having them have some storage and so on. I know this is a complicated question.
Yeah.
But how those types of things could be ran for the strategy, build land, build generation, build batteries, but. Using existing footprints of big customers and residences. Just like to hear how that that piece fits in. I know it's all the above, but the relative. Opportunity, if you will, within the building. Yeah, so, um, so we'll talk a little bit more about that at the. At the next session. Um. Last time we went, we had a pretty detailed discussion in the June meeting. Um, we talked about it pretty extensively. Um, if we we basically. Since then have updated the analysis. We look at residential rooftop. Commercial building and then utility scale. This stuff is utility scale.
Right.
And this utility scale, as you can see, is in the thirty megawatt range. Um, it'll generate roughly around thirty thousand megawatt hours a year. Um, the commercial industrial buildings, there are several opportunities, and we've got a handful identified and will pursue those. Um, but those will be significantly less just because existing building structure on the commercial industrial. Um, weren't designed to handle the loads associated. weren't designed to handle the loads associated with, with solar. And that was a discussion we had back in June. On the residential side, we basically run through some analysis associated with, you know, if you get in the range of, there's roughly twenty five thousand single family residences in our territory. If we envision that we can capture maybe ten percent of those solar, again, thinking for trees and orientation and roof loading and all sorts of things. That could represent another twenty megawatt. Solar opportunity.
Get them out.
There's a wood burner right there.
Go solar, go. So, so we have a, we have a residential solar program in place and we keep running. I think one of the things that we'll do differently going forward as we and accelerate that program is a lot more marketing.
And I think they're beyond to use the existing built infrastructure as virtual power plant.
As what you can follow it down.
And as a virtual, as a virtual.
But it could be an actual.
Right, right, right. So, so the idea is that the faster we do our AMI rollout, because it's the one thing we could do. Cause that's one thing I've asked Greg also, but you'll have a certain time period for it in my rollout. If you accelerate it, you could do more with existing buildings. You could do time of use, you could do controls. And so, so just from a strategy point of view, at least at a high level, my recommendation is if you can and has accelerate the AMI rollout, I think it's worth considering because it may be something that affects the decision. And I just.
And it wouldn't just be virtual because maybe somebody could have a two cell small.
No, exactly. I mean.
Property in there.
It, it's a virtual power plant in the sense that if you, it's, 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 it's doing two things, right? It's like you're providing local source there.
Yeah, I think, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, that the, the concept is load management or demand management, et cetera. And we'll provide, we've got a couple of programs that we're literally releasing right now. That are part of the connected homes, that's part of the demand management. This goes back to basically managing the load and trying to cap that out. So both, both are important pieces of it.
Cause I know like in other states, people have VPP programs. And so they, so utilities are engaging with them and they're consolidating them to a certain scale and then, you know, they're providing that to the ISOs.
So, so the good news is we are now contracted on a VPP type program. Do that work on a virtual peak or something? So we literally are working on the communications to roll that out, but that's in place. So you'll, you'll see more of it in the next several months.
But I didn't mean to get us sidetracked.
Yeah, no, on, on that point though, I mean residential, there is a way to assess residential potential by looking at orientation of buildings and, and trees. So whether it's ten percent, twenty percent, and I don't think it would exceed thirty percent. That's still significant chunk of potential capacity. I realize it's complicated because it's capacity owned by the resident, not by our MLD. So it works sort of suppress demand more than it generates grid power and have to still retain a certain amount of capacity because it may be cloudy at some, at some point. But it's. But I, but I think we're underestimating that potential by at least a factor of two. And I know we want to do it all, so I, it has to be balanced, but I think we, we could look at this a little more.
Yep. And there's some, sir, down, down to sixty cents from a dog twenty a lot. Are they going to go back up or are we, do we vote on that or what? The solar.
We, we can look at bringing the backup. There, I think there's some other mechanisms associated with how we promote the adoption of residential PV. And that might be a lot of people look at. We ran that program for two years. It didn't really change. It didn't change the adoption rate at all.
It's commercial too. The dog twenty was commercial as well.
Yep, it did commercial and industrial as well. Yeah, sorry.
The change from twelve hundred to six hundred, that was because of the, the deal your program was stopped.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, it was.
Two hundred fifty thousand dollar one shot, I think. There's more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, there are, you face it, that's as red, but that was stopped. And then they started a new state program which separates for them on peace. So right now we're just shouldering all the costs. So I just want to say, we're all, we're having the discussion about, you know, want to do this and that and that. We want to do some more storage for customers. And that also means we'll have to raise, increase the rates on the energy efficiency fund. So, you know.
Sure.
It's a balance that we have to.
Or we take.
Well, I think at the end of the day, we have a program in place right now. We have a new program, a virtual speaker concept that we're, that we're contracted on that we're rolling out right now. So we have, we have things that are actually doing. Again, at the end of the day, I think the key message from the last strategy piece, as much in territory as we possibly can. It's not only utility scale, residential fits into it and that's part of the driver.
This is always. Great. Let's go further. You know, there. Remembering the pattern.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present this year's or this upcoming year's proposed budget. And. Yeah, thank you. So yes, next slide. All right. So this is basically an overview of the budgeting process. You'll probably recognize a slide from last year. Just to summarize, back in June, we started the budgetary process where I worked with all the different departments to, to work together to get the pro forma budgets put together. In August, the different divisions had submitted the preliminary budget requests along with labor distribution tables. And we will begin to assemble the capital projects. Last month, the actual modules were put together, preliminary numbers were actually, you know, crafted. And power supply information was discussed where we sat down myself, Megan and Greg. And budget adjustments were made in reference. So that brings us to today in October. Tonight, as you know, both the cab and the board will receive the presentation that they had to give here. And you folks will vote, vote on the budget tonight. After the budget is voted upon and approved, we're going to close out older purchase orders, requisitions will split for the calendar year begins. So that's when we get into the business of having a warrant for expenditures that were in, at the tail end of calendar year twenty five or twenty four. And then begins twenty five and then technically upon January first, twenty twenty five, the new year begins, that begins our new fiscal year. Any questions? Seeing none, next slide please. Ah, perfect.
I do have one quick question.
Yes.
In a, in a chat with Greg or Greg, if we remember wrong, like if anybody has questions, we should vote on it tonight, but if we wanted to delay the cycle, that would be okay or just?
We could, okay. So moving on to the next slide here, this is our revenue for calendar year twenty twenty four and calendar, calendar year twenty twenty five. As you'll see, we have budgeted revenue for twenty four, but we're projecting by December twenty third, thirty first, twenty twenty four. And the proposed budget moving forward for calendar year twenty five. As you can see, we had budgeted a hundred and fifteen million dollars for revenue. This year we're looking to block in at about a hundred and ten. Next year, based off of our internal analysis, we're looking at approximately a hundred and twenty two million dollars worth of revenue for next year. You'll note that under the purchase power capacity and transmission, while we projected it at thirty eight point two million dollars, we're looking at approximately, or we budgeted at thirty eight point two million dollars this year. We're looking to come in around thirty three point two million dollars. Any questions? Yes, so.
It basically shaped the big, that works.
It's part of it. Part of it is. Ten, ten megawatts.
Because your fuel amounts are the same, so the amount of energy used is about the same, right?
Remember those are two different, yeah, so your energy is usage.
Yeah, so, so the energy, fuel, fuel is used is about the same, but nobody.
Correct. But. Why don't we just pay lower cost for energy?
No, it's the same, the cost of the.
So there, there, there's, yeah, there's, there's energy which is tied to usage and which is also tied to kilowatt hours and the blended rate for that. And then the capacity transmission is tied to the rate and the piece of the various ones. So there's, so there are two very different, that's why they're split separately, but you're right, they're very different elements. But the.
But, but this point also is that maybe the, the total energy used was higher, but at a lower rate, so that, that, the fuel charges are equivalent, but.
Okay, correct. Yeah, exactly. There's a lot of numbers behind the numbers. We'll try and tell the ourselves. Moving on, this is our operating budget slide. You'll see again on the left is calendar year twenty four's budget. The center slide or center column is what we project to finish up at the end of the year. And then our proposed calendar year twenty five budget. I want to call your attention to the bottom line net income. When we put together the budget for this year, we have projected a net income of eight point five million dollars. What we're projecting out is we're going to finish the year with fourteen point six million dollars of net income. And again, for next year, calendar year twenty five, we are looking to project out approximately nine point three million dollars. Otherwise, our expenses have, you know, pretty much remained within good, good form. You'll also look at the other operating expenses. If you have questions about that, then it's there is the above the line payments, the below the line payments and our depreciation costs. Moving on to the operating budget once again here, you can see a breakdown of what our actual operating budget costs are. So in the area that's circled with certificates, capacity, transmission and energy, this is our, our power supply cost. So this is the cost of energy for operating pairs here at our. The bottom two items, payments to the town, you can see along with our operating costs. That accounts for, you know, as you can see there with the math of approximately twenty or thirty four percent. The balance of our operating costs are, let me straighten up, the balance of our operating costs consists of the power supply costs. Any further questions? So now we're going to look at our actual power supply classes. As you can see here in the far left, we're starting out with calendar year twenty five. And we bring it all the way through calendar year thirty. You'll see that our base case loan growth is approximately one point five percent over the next several years. So some years it's a little higher, as you can see the little three percent in calendar year twenty seven. Other years it's slower, like in calendar year twenty six where it drops or dips around negative one point nine percent. But what you can see on average is steady growth. And again, I can't stress this enough, that power supply isn't, has to be cost. Along with that approximately ninety percent of our contracts or ninety percent of our power supply is actually being contracted. Any further questions?
Yeah. Okay, so the forecasted kilowatt sales are basically E and E's projections in terms of what the growth is for our district or where, where do we benchmark those?
So we look for the forecast, I mean, we really also do as an internal analysis.
Okay.
Lot of internal work on, on the load, except that load drives everything down.
No, I understand that. It's why I'm, I'm asking the questions in terms of it, it sensitivity would depend on adoption of VVs and. So it's built into that is the assumption of how, what our penetration would be into our. And among those factors, do we get to the twenty thirty five or the twenty forty, whatever goal of penetration we're hope to make in, in our networks at this growth rate or we behind or where, where are we on track for?
Correct.
For that.
Yeah, so we do have a twenty fifty forecast.
Okay.
And then all the, all the years leading up.
So you're slow to that.
But, but that is a target based forecast, right? Cause we don't know whether by twenty fifty, we're actually going to achieve all that adoption rate. But we're just assuming by twenty fifty, based on the law, we'll have to achieve that target.
Right.
What should the low look like?
Right.
But the short term, especially the next two, three years, it's really based on, okay, what is actually happening in the last two, three years? And what we think, you know, based on our program, like encouraging customers to adopt and whatnot. And what might be likely happening, but we still don't know. So we, so there's also the push and pull of like, we want to achieve the goal, but also want to be more realistic. Of like, I can say next year we're going to grow five percent, but very likely it's not going to happen.
Well, that will happen unless we have programs and initiatives and forums and stuff.
Raise the budget even more.
So.
To kind of dial out the, the incentives.
Yeah.
I think there's a balance again.
Yeah, and my personal thing, we're way underneath what we should be putting out for incentives. So if you, if you're asking about should we increase incentives, my answer will be yes. Because I don't think we're meeting our goals. I mean, I understand the push and pull of we want to be on this, this progressive line. And I, I think we are under budgeting the incentives. So yes, I would think we need to do more on that.
You better be lit. So Karen has.
Karen threw the hand up. Does anybody mind? Karen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering before we get too far and, and I can wait till the end. I was wondering if we could just talk a little bit about the twenty twenty five operating budget. So there was a huge discrepancy between operate income and it looks favorable. And I also see a huge difference in general administrative expenses. I was just wondering if before we leave this topic, we could kind of comment on what happened in the year to, to make these, these are big swings, ten million to sixteen point five million.
Well, that's true. Your question, so she had two questions. One, power supply expense, two seventy million to sixty one million actual. So those, Karen, those are driven by a combination of kilowatt hour sales. And then what energy and, and as we just talked about a few moments ago, the actual costs associated with capacity and transmission. And those are intended to be passed through costs. So the power supply expense is the power supply expense. And so that's driven by market factors. As well as how will we manage our peak and also the weather conditions. Relative to G and A, if you look at operating maintenance expense and G and A, between the two of those, one's a little bit higher, one's a little bit lower. We're looking at, so there's a bunch of things that we're doing internally to make sure that we have everything categorized correctly. But at the end of the day, on the G and A side, a lot of that is driven by subcontracted expenses as well as staffing levels. And we're not, and so we are, we're not spending as much on labor as the budget would suggest.
Okay, so is that a typical swing, Greg? Having that big of a discrepancy or was it?
We, we are typically each year under budget on our expense line. Yeah, we, we've been there for quite some time. That's typically how we, how we budget.
And so I was just wondering, and of course you, you know, I, I know you're hedging a lot and you plan for the worst and, you know, hope for the best. So you know, so what does that say for, maybe I'm getting ahead of where you guys are. I was just wondering what that means for rates going forward. Thank you.
Yep. Moving on, if there are no further questions regarding the power supply slide. Just some non-power supply information concerning the twenty five budget. The calendar year twenty five budget consists of hundred nine positions across various disciplines. So that is our framework if we add a ten percent person staffed on. As of earlier this month, as of the first of October, we grew, or we had eighty seven full time employees, I think it's eighty six or eighty seven at this point. In terms of efficiency and electrification programs, let me just finish the slide and we'll get to Pam. We have a new rebate program starting in January, in January twenty twenty five, which Megan can further discuss or explain. We are increasing our number. Um, we are increasing our number of solar installations, incentives changed as of March twenty twenty four. And we have increased our the number of air source heat pump installations over the past year. Um, in terms of customer customer bills, which was asked, the current budget draft assumes approximately a four percent increase of monthly average bills for residents from this past year, twenty twenty four, that approximately equates to nearly four dollars uh per month, you know, uh increase in terms of customer bills. Uh, yes, Pam?
Just a question on the labor. So eighty seven full-time move growing to one hundred and nine. How many of those twenty two are open positions today versus new adds for twenty five?
I will need to get back to you on that particular point. Uh, I don't want to even assume off the top of my head, so let me tomorrow morning I'll I'll find it out. I will get you that information. I just don't have it readily.
It's it's it'd be less than six, it'll be like four or five.
So sorry, four or five are open positions today and then the rest is growth?
I'm sorry, say that more times.
We're sorry, were you, I I did, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. Were you saying four or five physicians are open roles right now? And the remainder is growth?
The opposite.
Oh, opposite, okay.
There's a little over a hundred open positions and there's so in terms of new positions, there's again two or three, I I thought I had the data, but me and I don't. But it's it's mainly open positions that are not filled.
Okay.
Did you say thirteen are not filled or twenty?
So we are, we're basically, um, there's about eighteen, oh, yeah, it's on right there, eighteen open positions.
Twenty twenty one by one.
Twenty one by, there you go. So you're playing on by the mask. I'm going to say that of those, yeah, probably a little over a dozen are open positions not filled.
That's a significant increase in personnel. Right, and and and.
Uh, from the budget or?
Well, well, overall, place runs between eighty and ninety people consistently has asked, you know, how much of that is operations? Right? How much of that is is what department are those going in? It's not, it's not, you know, it's a discussion at this point, but the budget for, you know, another twenty positions is a very significant uh increase in in the baseline budget for a long period of time. Um, that's not, grid light has not had that many positions filled.
Typically, you've had that number of.
I think it depends more on ninety, you know, roughly, you know, o- over past history. So um, I mean, I'd like to see that, that's a significant increase. And if it's off, you know, I I just don't know where it's coming, is it coming in, you know, staff or is it coming in the o- operations team in 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 where are those positions being added? Well, we've lost a few in IRD, so we can get gaps to fill there, so.
And they're paid paid over positions in IRD.
So of the of the dozen or so that are open, most of them, that's about half of IRD. So IRDs run at about fifty percent. Or is. I just don't know traditionally how big that team was, but. Yeah, I mean, one in.
That's they include customer service and dollar.
Oh, that's customer service and bill.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And communications.
Yeah, yeah, which is, you know. Yeah, it's a big number. To pay them, right, that that's a that's a significant increase in 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 budget and and when you see it. You know, that those are sustained, this union positions they said. Right, and and you need, we need to, I I guess.
I think.
Understand that a little bit more before we increase the base, the base amount in employees every time you add one, it stays.
To to raise point, I don't think all twenty are new positions. It's backfill existing positions.
Correct.
We're still backfilling, at least for IRD. I think for engineer we are also.
Backfill, but not all the way to one on nine, right? Back the backfiller doesn't get hit at one on nine.
Uh, I'm not sure about that total number, but I all I know for IRD, it's all backfilling. We are not, we we have not put out any positions that that are new.
I I you know, I think we should have a separate discussion on growth provisions at at a certain at at a certain point, you know, and and how 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 and where we're we're going to have some employees. Right, I I understand we're going to grow, but you know, revenue has to grow, you know, comparably with with employees.
Yeah, I think that's the bottom line there. Customer bills will grow about four percent with the budget proposed with these other positions, but that's not application. That that way, that's all tied together.
Four percent staffing increase with the budget.
That includes, that's net net, that's what you're looking at. As proposed, that's that's the net result. That's why I put it on the slide.
And so four percent is four, not twenty, right?
Four four percent is four percent of the overall, so I think their question that Karen was asking was what's the what's the what's the implication on rates? What's the implication?
Well, no, I'm not talking about rates, I'm talking about number of employees, right?
Agreed, but I think your question was, it goes to cost and the vast number there is based on the budget. That's what that's the implication on cost, net net. And I think the other element that, you know, raised the question, I says, um, you know, like, we are massively supportive of air source heat pumps. And how do we get more air source heat pumps? Part of it's incentives, but part of it is communications. Part of it is the webinars, and there's a whole bunch of different things we do to encourage adoption. How do we get more rooftop solar on buildings? I mean, all these, you know, all of this territory stuff, all of the electrification. There's a cost of, the net net of that cost is about a four percent increase. That's the net net.
So Greg, going forward, maybe the next meeting, can we get a breakdown of the the labor from that twenty two people? Are everyone like, you know, you you're usually staff with seventeen and missed a five year, you know, and now we have fourteen, thirteen? I mean, it would be like, Bob's saying, you can at least, we'll see the growth pot and we'll see the existing replacements. But seeing that on a spreadsheet or or a slide might help us understand that a little better.
Yeah.
Um, because I think, Bob, right, like you look at that number, it sounds like a big number. Um, but I know you lost a lot, but I think a lot I will show would come out in the wash.
Yeah, I think the other thing that is important to understand, I'll have history as well, is that we've never been, in the four years I've been there, never been fully staffed.
I'm thinking that all the years of running board, there's always a number that we never hit.
Right.
But some, your your operating budget is a positive, so that means that you're operating with the right number of people. In that sense, but we're adding people, so as you add people, does your revenue walk and your costs go down and, yeah, because of the programs they create are part of it.
Same as the rates. Yeah, the rates score on four percent.
Yeah.
That's, in our past years, when you've done the rate, then you've included uh past year the power supply, that's not including the power supply, right? So if the power supply comes with the accident, that's going to be less important.
Yeah.
Okay, because in the past, like last year, it was like about twelve percent and it didn't remain all the sisters. Like last year was twelve percent presented, it was like six or seven.
Right, yeah.
Well, the even quarter twelve and then last year was ten, but.
And we've and we've done a lot, no single digits here.
Okay, exactly, that's what that's what actually happened, if you're right. Okay, I just want to be sure that what that four percent meant.
All it.
Okay.
And and I think looking forward is, I know Bob has a better view of looking back and and seeing where we've been, but if as we're getting variable power supply and we're trying to match that up with variable demand, it takes a little more time, therefore labor to track that, manage that, respond to that. Um, if I get my way, we do more with energy efficiency programs. That's going to take more time to uh to have labor and 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 people to do that. So so I think in looking at it, um, we're adding people, but we're adding people because the nature of the business is changing, the sources of energy are changing. Uh, we're we're, we need people to kind of track that, um, because there are downsides if we don't track it well.
Yeah, I actually, I just maybe to your com- on your comment about, oh, since we are first staff or still getting things done, but actually, we do have a backlog, we're trying to address that. Yeah, that's why we're backfilling the position. It's like, if if the board is interested, I can definitely explain to you how we we work, how we process rebates, how many, how much thoughts and 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 kind of a uh tax and balances we have to put in because the repair money, we're not just doubling our money. So there's a lot, a lot, I can show you the SOPs that we're good, when I talk about SOPs last time, we already have those drafts ready. I can show you an example of it, how many steps people need to take to make sure that we're spending the money correctly.
And I think in the cabinet would be helpful to get a more detailed uh personnel discussion at a future meeting. And and maybe just just from a strategic point, I'm saying this is what we're going to do. And I and I think, you know, guys agree that because that.
Yeah.
So not just IRD, but just small district.
All points is, it's what is backfilling versus what is growth and where is the what the purpose of the growth is to build in. Right, so I think seeing that breakdown.
And and you just have to be aware of where we what what's actually happening and you know, where people are being stressed and, you know, where more is.
And I finally comment, I wasn't saying that we don't need to backfill some of these, but I'm saying you are running and then justifying or or saying what those positions are, or what we understand that what they're doing is a value that we may not see in the day to day on our, my electricity working. But it's a value to the the grid light being successful and moving ahead. So it's definitely, I just wanted to know what that breakdown is to see where they're going. Um, but I, to raise point, you know, there's things you need to do to move ahead and work on programs.
Yeah.
That, you know, is part of the business. I don't, we'll make that on the menu, right? Sorry?
Maybe it's for just a thought, particularly in the immediate meeting, that's a way to have a deeper look at the question that everybody's asking. I don't know if anybody is thinking this goes to an amendment, it's a proposed amendment to the budget, but.
I don't I don't think it goes to men at this point, but I don't think we can really open up the operating budget without having more information on this particular vision.
Yeah.
I don't think I already, I don't think I've read the volume of the operating budget. Well, we basically. There might be other other things we want to clarify then, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Any further questions on this slide? Moving on to the capital budget. So this year's capital budget is, um, we're going to look at the capital budget, you know, this particular year, calendar year twenty five. But we're also going to look at calendar years twenty five through thirty. For calendar year twenty five, proposing a fifty point eight million dollar budget. Some of the highlights of this budget are the inclusion of a separate line item for light duty rolling stock vehicles, so you can pick up trucks. Um, so forth. We're looking at um two different um solar PVs along with um battery storage systems. One for two million dollars, the other for three million dollars. And then also the system-wide land procurement, which Greg mentioned earlier on, you see. Some of the carryforward money that uh you'll see in the budget includes substations number six, that's the new Wilmington substation, the backlog transformers, the grid modernization program, which is the AMI portion of that program, and some of the rolling stock rates. As you see here on this slide, uh, this is a presentation of all the years. Um, from calendar year twenty five through thirty, broken down by specific areas. So you have the general managers area, which is ID land, you have facilities, IRD, uh, information technology, engineering, operations and grid assets. You'll see the first three years in particular are of greater value, uh, fifty million, we'll call it fifty point eight million, thirty eight point five, thirty seven point five million dollars. That's really tied to the new Wilmington substation along with some of these, um, you know, the solar PVs along with the battery assets. You'll also see that the ten million dollars is nested above for the land procurements. On the outer years, you'll see it drops down thirteen point six, eight point nine and nine point one. Yes, Pam?
Uh, just wondering if if the ten million is for land, shouldn't we just call that land instead of general manager?
Um, we could call it that, uh, the way that was just put in the book is it's described as, you know, historically general managers projects.
Okay, that's a, that's typical, maybe I just missed that last year, okay.
It's bonus.
So in terms of the land, uh, Pam, do you, okay. So as you can see here, this is uh to be done, I think this is coming fiscal either calendar year, calendar year twenty five. It is the acquisition of lands developed and operated in territory, energy assets. Includes costs associated but not limited to title reports, filing fees, closing costs, map, map and GIS reporting data and environmental assets. Some of the challenges that we find with land is the uniqueness of land, finding the right parcel and the availability of that land. You can find this on the in your budget, your handy-dandy budget book here on uh page eleven, line three, project F twenty five dash one. Another project that I'd like to highlight is the rolling stock upgrades. As we said, I've broken out the rolling stock between light duty and heavy duty. In this case, we're looking at uh this year alone approximately four hundred and ten thousand dollars for uh fork truck along with four um super duties, uh, for F two fifty or I should say super duty trucks, I don't like your brand names. Um, some of the challenges that we have is of course long lead times, especially for specialty items like the fork truck. Again, going back to the entire budget process from twenty five to thirty, we're looking to add one point one eight million dollars over the course of that six-year period of time. But for this year alone, we're looking at four hundred and ten thousand.
One one quick question on on the vehicles. There is legislation that was delayed in Massachusetts.
Or that's a heavy duty.
Yeah, we're we're cor- correct, but you can just imagine the cascading effects of having zero emission vehicles in your fleet.
Diesel trucks, see this one you're referring.
So I, my suggestion is buy real now, right? I don't know what you think, what your right number is or the wrong number. Um, I I absolutely think that it's a, it is a very wise investment today to at least engage in a contract in light duty and heavy duty vehicles. You're not going to get it for two years, but you purchase them. So I I I really do think that the board, we should amend this budget item top upwards. They purchased more vehicles today because they did delay it to the implementation because uh twenty twenty six is, you won't be able to purchase anymore in twenty twenty six, but that means you've got to buy in twenty twenty five. So this is our twenty twenty five budget, so um, I I I don't know, there's an idea of if these are all, you know, two, two to four hundred thousand are all vehicles. You know, how many do you want? How many do you need? You think you could help with it, so. That's a, that's a, you you're getting the pick of your lifetime right here, Peter. But but I I I just, the the, there's going to be a significant change in 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 how you can do it. And and these light duty vehicles are, there's nothing on the market right now. But but too far adjusted, right?
So let's move on to the next slide.
So what are you suggesting, Bob? I wish I could have the budget idea, I would say, you would you say?
The budget.
You want four? Okay, double it, get eight.
Yeah.
You know?
And indignation, so that's good on my duty. And the next slide is going to talk about slide thirteen.
Yeah.
Is where it really comes into play and.
But so this particular slide here, as I indicated earlier, I've broken out both the light duty and the heavy duty. Think of your light duties as your pickup trucks, your gas-powered vehicles. What you're referring to is the legislation that has been um delayed until twenty twenty six, that's for diesel emitting vehicles. If I'm correct. So what we're talking about, yeah, so when you're talking about in particular bucket trucks and material handler trucks, that's where the impact of this legislation, I I don't want to get into a discussion about policy and legislation, but I do want to say that here's where the greatest impact we will feel it as an organization is, when you look at the the total amount that we're looking at for twenty five, we're talking a little bit under a million dollars, that's approximately two material handler trucks. Where it really starts to hit us is going through twenty five or twenty six through thirty. Because the idea is that we want to change out our bucket trucks because they're at the end of their useful life and get brand new bucket trucks to replenish our fleets. So if I were to make a humble suggestion, is it's in this line item here where we want to condense it down to calendar year twenty five, that's where, you know, we may want to look at it.
So sensible, are are you suggesting that we buy maybe hundred percent?
No, I'm suggesting the opposite.
You're suggesting the opposite, grandfather.
You've got to be, you.
Yeah, grandfather, brother.
Yeah, get grandfather now, yeah.
Yeah, and then I just got a bucket truck that we ordered three years ago and it just came in. So when we're talking about this, I didn't. Yeah, and then I just got a bucket truck that we ordered three years ago and it just came in. So when we're talking about this, I can go right on some of this. Where the laws are changing, but it took me three years to get a bucket truck. It's nowhere near the size. We've got forty feet and it's a much smaller truck in my department, but it took three years to get it in. So just to keep in mind, this is a fiscally constrained budget when we look at it. So if we are going to do this, I need to know how soon and because I will have to go through and update the budget to make sure it. You know, it flushes out.
You know, I I would say if you've got, how 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 many vehicles? With within two to three years of the end of their life, you have five, you have six, you know, out of out of the. Out of the X amount of trucks that you have, if you, you know, twenty five percent of the end of their life, put twenty five percent of those on the books this year. And and if it is five point nine million in twenty twenty five to twenty thirty, okay, take half of that, what, you know, three, three, three million in that whole five.
Well, that would be forward, pull forward, pull forward two months.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same conversation I've been giving to everybody, because we started talking about. Um the trucks in my department and their department and then talking about electric vehicles and could they even do it because of the service in the building, which we couldn't. But um we start talking about, should we be ordering? In advance to get around this bill change.
Correct. Also, the load management strategy, if we don't have to unload.
Yeah. So are there any further questions regarding the rolling stock and how we do the in light duty?
We do the analysis, make that nine hundred and three million.
Yeah.
We'll look at some numbers, but that's order magnitude.
Yeah.
So do you increase that number there? Want to cut some plus ways else?
Yes.
Out of the budget?
Oh, you had to fit the cash.
Again, this is a capital budget, so these these systems don't be, whatever we order won't be delivered until twenty six, maybe twenty seven. So to answer your question, Phil, wouldn't wouldn't necessarily have to take anything out of the budget, okay, because it doesn't affect cash.
But then if that law comes into place, you get deliveries, that can affect the delivery, will that be affected to the way we want?
You already have the order, so the value, what are they going to do? Arrest us?
Change the law.
Change the charge.
Change the law.
Change the charges, they can't give any license.
Once you place the order, I think you.
You're.
Put second number until it's.
She places the order and you have a contract.
You have appropriated money for that type of truck, not.
Correct.
Yeah, the appropriate law.
Yeah, um and I didn't, I don't want to sidetrack anybody with this comment, but at some point, Ben, um I'd like to figure out how the magic math goes from. Calendar year twenty four. Um and then get calendar year twenty four projected and a carryover and then a different number to calendar year twenty five. I I I don't begin at the details of that. I realize that there's logic and math behind each line that that happens. But when we talk about there being a carryover between twenty four and one number, and then there's a different number in calendar year twenty five. Why why aren't why aren't they the same number, but but and.
We'll do it in two sentences.
Okay.
Real quickly, so when you look at page number two and three in the capital budget.
Right.
You'll find that calendar year twenty four.
Right.
Is the total amount of carry forward that was budgeted. Calendar year, the Milcom, the projected spend.
Right.
So that's what we project to spend.
Right.
Calendar year twenty four carry over.
Right.
What we're projecting to bring over does not necessarily mean that we're going to to A minus B. Or A minus B, we're not going to actually carry that full amount over and spent amount.
Right.
Examples are along the lines of some of the other programs that we've had and in working with the various different departments within F M O B. I myself and Aaron, we sat down with the departments, go through and ask, is this project going to continue? Do you still need the money for this project? Because the last thing I want to have is. Uh zombie projects, if you want to call it that, in our capital budget where it just carries over year to year to year and doesn't get spent.
Right.
So that was an exercise of cleaning up older projects or projects that were. That were budgeted at one point for X amount of dollars and either came in under budget or the project changed in some manner, some manner. To which that there was no longer a need for those projects.
They're going to order equipment and not get delivered.
Yes, so the money that's carried forward is either uh equipment that's already been encumbered, so we have a contract in place. We are still committed to pay for those guy equipments. Or it could be factored in for milestone payments, which we'll discuss shortly uh moving forward. Make sense?
Uh no, but uh thank you.
Thirty five million get carried over to spend in twenty twenty five, so when you, when you look at your capital fund, you're going to spend fifty, but. Thirty five of that's carried over from the previous year, so you're not having to borrow from other sources or.
No, you you combine the two. In principle, it'll be thirty five plus fifty, in principle.
Uh okay, that's what I thought, so I would think that the budget's really eighty five million, that's your dollars, fifty.
Well, some of the projects with the milestone payments are delayed. And it gets back to the the discussion that Bob was mentioning. We have to commit to say that we have money in the budget in order to exercise these contracts. We don't have money in the budget, we can't have a contract that guarantees to pay. Our cash flow year over year, for example, our capital, uh our projected capital spend this year is going to be somewhere between. Uh thirteen to sixteen million dollars. As of this morning checking, we're about eleven point one million dollars as of the month of September.
And the budget was?
And the budget is thirty four million dollars.
So you're just going to order made to get them to the most. It's not, because of delivery schedules, it's not possible to. But then you got to carry the thirty five million into, it's really a twenty twenty five budget, because you got to have a twenty twenty five budget, so the twenty twenty five budget really should be with some of those two values. Should be, I mean, if that's the, that's your overall budget, because you're going to carry all the previous spend that you haven't realized yet, plus all the future spend that you think you might spend. In twenty twenty five, you need to have budgeted for, so the total budget really is eighty five million. And thirty five of it is from the previous year that's not yet been spent. It's kind of in, but your budget is, it's still your total, what you need to budget for the year, it's still your total budget. It's not fifty and thirty five, it's eighty five.
Yeah, I guess the practice you kind of used is this, I mean, I think you trained us to think like this very well.
This is kind of, this is the first year it's really been drawn out like this.
No, I mean, it was like the same in the past.
No, the carryover wasn't spelled out like this. It wasn't. More details, yeah. It was, it was, it was there, but it was hidden.
Okay, yeah.
It uh twenty twenty five was at eighty five and you wouldn't have, and you would have aligned maybe up that carryover was thirty five. There would have been a line anywhere your capital expense grew by thirty five because you didn't spend in the previous year. It would have been buried in the details. This is called a. So or like the final number that we're going to see in past years would have said eighty five.
So the idea of this year's capital budget book is to provide more detail regarding the projects and to show. Exactly which projects are programmed into the budget for this year, and because this is a snapshot in time. It will change in in future years, so some of those projects that we have now could very well fall off. Or be hit, correct.
I I would say. But to go down like a lineups, pick an individual project that has carryover, I I mean, the Wilmington substation.
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah.
So. The carryover is fifteen point four million because that was unspent, you know, was budgeted for this year, makes sense. So next year, your budget, you have a budget almost eight million, but it's really you're you're going to carry twenty three million for this coming year for that project because of purchases. So the total budget number for that project for twenty five is really.
Twenty two.
Twenty three million or almost twenty four million, not eight million, right, and then. It's separated by your actual budget. The way I'm used to looking at, I would have carried twenty three. I would have shown that I didn't spend it all, and then I expected it, or I would have spread it out. If I didn't expect it to be sent in twenty five, I might have put a little bit of it for the carryover in twenty six, twenty seven.
Yes, you'll see some of that too.
Okay, yeah. Me too.
So speaking of the Wilmington substation, um as you can see here by the slide, this is scheduled from twenty twenty five through twenty thirty. The budget as a whole is thirty five million dollars, you'll take it to account everything um in terms of the budget. Some of the um the highlights this past year, we made our first milestone payment for two point five million dollars. Um we are prepared to go to the board. Um at the time of the slides, we had put down before the close of calendar year twenty five, I believe there's been some delays as a result.
Well, it's going to be on the December seventeenth board meeting, but.
Right, so we're looking at either December or January at this point, but by the close of calendar year twenty five. Um you know, we will have slight clearing in foundation preparations slated to go and um you know, we'll be moving forward. Uh we're also anticipating the delivery of the two uh seventy five M V A uh one fifteen K V and transformers in January twenty five, although as that. That's still on target. So some of the challenges that we've had are supply chain disruptions, and that's why you see some of that carry forward um reported out. And in terms of this project, now that we're including the acquisition of land in terms of the total budget cost. We're looking at a thirty five million dollar project in terms of the order of that, yes, Miguel?
So my question is not just about your budget here, but the overall project, okay, but at the end of the day. You're willing resiliency to this substation, right? And the timeframe is twenty eight. Okay, so you've had delays this year, you haven't been able to spend as much. Or get stuff done to the level that we've expected to be done this year. So just from an overall listening perspective, are we on on track? To hit the milestone that is important, so 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 I I I ask the question, what is the core milestone? Okay, we had a goal of twenty twenty eight. From a safety point, what is the right goal? And how are we likely to be? So I I I just wanted not just to get one year, I wanted to get a whole plan. And see, you know, where do you need to be from a resilience point of view for that substation, because it's helping, you know, it's. So 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 you heard my question.
I'll 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 do the first cut of it. So back in the September meeting, we uh here laid up a kind of a summary. The intention was by the end of twenty twenty seven to have load transitioned. The context of that, and we might have another delays, and part of the delays are tied to the partners we've worked with. We're connected to the national grid system, and that's been part of the delays in terms, and there's a nice description in the board.
I I saw that, I saw that, but I'm asking for the overall project.
Yep, so just so you understand some of the context relative to the resiliency of the network. Um one of the things that we have done, that to raise point, we're we're looking at trying to do the best of our ability to forecast load. Um but also what we've done with station five is worked pretty diligently over the past two years, three years now. In terms of doing extra maintenance on that system to add additional life and making it more solid so that if it. That we're not as dependent upon the substation coming at a particular time. So we've added at least five years, maybe another ten years of life to station five. Um so from a resiliency perspective. Station six scheduled, uh whether it's twenty seven or twenty eight is not putting us at risk in terms of maintaining our reliability and our resiliency.
And then so but but then Jason's point, like I mean, we effectively spent twenty three million.
Well, you have a budget because some of that's part of the construction, construction.
So realistically, how much do you think we get done in twenty year?
Uh how much are we going to spend in twenty twenty five?
Or or how much will get done? Uh because it's like you spend money to get stuff.
The transformers procured, we have the switchgear procured, there's another slide in there with the, you have it in there?
Uh the one we did last month?
The one that I might just go to us?
Uh no, not not the one I went up to us, yeah, go ahead.
We do have an updated uh milestone uh schedule that we can circulate.
Yeah.
Okay, so the main thing is like main question was on resiliency, like I I don't want that being compromised.
No, it won't be compromised. We're, yeah, we're good up there. We're good, we're good.
So from that perspective?
Yeah.
It's not, we're not slowing, there's no slow walking, there's no slowing it down, we're going, we want to get it in as quickly as we can. Um there's partners that affect the schedule, but from your question, um the schedule, the the new schedule is not putting our network at risk.
Is it, is there any possibility of parallel type work? I I know you were rebuilding the substation, but in parallel with that, we we are you creating new circuits coming out of the substation?
Yes, we will, yeah.
So are you going to work that in series?
That'll be, we'll be uh scoping that out next year as far as uh getting the road worked on, getting the plans done for that, and the feeder getaways.
Yeah, right, do your getaways, do your work up up to the station.
Yeah.
Out in the field, you know, you're, you know, you're.
Again, I like the, we got the transformers, we can have everything ready to go, but waiting on the connection to the transformer.
Yes, correct, you're correct, you know, just do the, do the dead work.
Yeah.
Fill it all up and and that maybe.
That's our intention.
Yeah, yeah, and then that that's a great, like I back to saying, you know, how much? Yeah, then that's a great project to report on, right? You know, you can see see that in which progress, which is, you know, either this, this, this was our intention, get to. Either one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, panel systems coming coming all in, you know, and then you can see how. How that capital money is being invested and spent.
Any further questions? Moving on, um this is the grid modernization program, it consists of AMI and M D M. Now, keep in mind, M D M is pretty much done. So the the majority of this information here, again, the entire budget, we're at seventeen point two five million dollars. Uh in terms of the AMI projects, uh we're preparing to go out for the next morning. For which, AMI?
Uh the bit, so the, no, actually, we're we're, our assumption is in the December, possibly November. Um but we're actually going to do, we're we've selected the vendor and we're going to contract it.
Okay.
We're well down the road on the AMI vendor selection.
Uh transformer.
I'm clearly on the end of my.
Yeah, please go ahead.
The question I asked earlier.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, they can be fast-tracked this because this is rolling out over five years, right?
No.
Then the budget items like AMI is going through pretty good.
Yeah, so our goal is to by um twenty twenty six to have the system um. Commissioned and accepted, like putting the meters in at the end of twenty five. So those are, those are some additional parts of the project. But the actual core of the system is intended by the middle of twenty twenty six to be.
So so the AMI.
Core of it.
Will be like, so you have smart meters to the whole system by end of twenty six?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, not end of point thirty, yeah.
Okay, now because here the plan was like, it shows, the budget shows right through twenty three.
So yeah, there's additional pieces, additional collectors, etc., that will get added to the system, but the core of the system will be in the next two years.
But also, just to your point of like, the really important work is after the meters are installed, right? That that work is already ongoing, that's why we built the M D M system, where I think our current meters, at least eighty five percent are. Um they're not the latest version of smart meters, but they do have hourly data. I think I mentioned this at one of the previous meetings where. We can start to do the rate design and push out the TOUs before even the AMI meters are installed. So we we have that data, that's why we're using this data, the meter data system, that way we can actually. Uh roll out the the rate plan, the redesign, you know, independent of the the AMI installation, if that makes sense.
And would the AMI installation, are you controlling the phone, reading, following the. Or more or less, you can control it.
They're doing. The AMI system is a is a feedback mechanism, not a control mechanism. So the things that we're putting in place right now, the connected phones, is the, it's the prompt, or the customer wants to opt in. Um it'll actually control the meter if the customer wants that to happen.
The meter, the device.
The device, sorry, yeah, not not the meter, the meters, this 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 allows us to basically track and confirm.
The data on every fifteen minutes.
Or yeah, but most of them are fifteen minutes, some of them five minutes or faster. But it, so it's it's a key part of the platform, but it's a, it it's not, it'll be done faster than twenty thirty.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
All right, transformers and capacitor banks. Uh for the entire, you know, program, we're looking at approximately eight point eight million dollars. But in twenty twenty five, we're looking at one point three seven two million dollars. And we're looking at approximately one hundred and fifty five pole mounted transformers, twenty five head mounted transformers, and we're also including uh two point five for carryover. Some of the issues that we've had, which are starting to finally clear up, having supply chain dis- uh disruptions. And issues with uh delivery schedules. I know just yesterday, or was it the day before, we received how many transformers?
We've received probably almost hundred and seventy in the last month.
Yeah.
The one vendor told us twenty twenty six originally, and they they just showed up.
Very good, so two years ago, you couldn't find one.
Yeah, it's all the, I used to come all that production space and they canceled their order, so all that production space got condensed down, so.
So we're starting to see some of that backlog really clear up, and we've made it a point to ensure that, you know. We continue to to do our diligence on the the transformer program.
Yeah, because you still have a huge carryover, right?
Carryover, right. And aren't they ten percent more efficient than the old ones too?
No.
No, or a little bit more?
No.
Wow. Um, if you go back to the last letter, so we had the um transformer replacement um program. And we underspent that, if that's gonna get re-engaged. You know, seriously coming in again, then that number is inadequate. And then again, um, you you had a carryover of roughly five hundred million dollars. Um, the um, not, I got it, sorry, uh, five million dollars, and then you turn around. And we wanna take that carryover. And purchase more transformers and re-engage that that project. Because that one point three million is not enough to include.
Well, we looked at what just came in, what we had coming in and what we have scheduled to come in in the next year. So this year, we were able to come down to that number.
Okay.
So we did look at that, at what we had, and we we have a lot of transformers.
Been going out from twenty-six out to thirty, we're looking at approximately one point five million dollars each year, year over year.
So the costs have come down and. And the number that we're we're catching up to all that backlog, we had all those.
Hey, when you have the staff.
Twenty-three, we have more staff and. We're gonna be on.
In the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta build up your hurricane clean supply.
Yeah, right, because there's a new, yeah, very. Um, this next slide here is just showing a variety of projects, you know, everything from routine constructions to the pole replacement program to. Facilities, other projects, I T projects. So what I wanted to capture in the first several slides is in terms of order of magnitude, the projects are. Uh, the new substation, the transformers, the grid modernization. Uh, those projects, you know, carry a significant price tag. These other small projects are. Are small but equally important for various reasons. Go ahead, Vivek.
All these are really big part of our resilience plan. And we had a budget for one million, we spent two hundred forty K and there's no carryover.
Part of it is they end up in the capital budget, so I think you're looking at.
I'm looking at the capital.
I'm sorry.
What line you want?
Line fifty, uh, line fifty-one, page twenty-seven, page sixty-seven.
Correct. So that's pole replacement program for Redding North Redding. Um, there's other pole replacement programs, snagging, you know, gearing upgrades. So it's all scattered throughout the capital budget based on the scope of the project.
So what about Redding and North Redding? I mean, you you did, there's no more poles.
No, no, we're replacing poles, we're replacing.
Sometimes they get caught up in other jobs, or they do a reconducted job or a conversion job. It might not be charged up to strictly just a a pole replacement that came back off the inspection list, so. We are changing poles, we are going through quite a few poles.
But the money, because this is accounting for the money, right? It's just accounting for the money, so that's pole plus labor, right? Yeah, of course, and the pole is the labor.
Which line you want?
He's on, he's on line.
Line fifty-one?
He's looking at, right. I I guess if you look at the old years, twenty-five, I think I wrote three hundred thousand. Yeah, it was more aligned with the expense this year.
Correct.
Yeah, out of accounting.
Correct, Vivek, I think if if I understand your question correctly. If if there was a D O T job widening a road and I had to replace thirty poles associated with that. Those thirty poles are not in line item fifty-one, correct? They're in the other budget for that, for that D O T, the lines thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Line like like fifty-six is an example of that.
Yeah, all right, let me just not assume it, okay? Just please make sure that the poles are needed straight.
Yeah, yeah. That's fine, I have a hole, I have a hole.
Right, so this this is an example of what we project to spend throughout the year. And whether or not we're.
No, no, I am, we are talking about a budget for next year, but I'm also looking at what is supposed to be spent this year. Just because we have an opportunity to review that, because I'm wanting to make sure.
Drop a pole off at his house. It is.
Thank you.
So in summary, as you can see, from calendar year twenty-five through calendar year thirty. Um, by order of magnitude, calendar years twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Really have the greatest amount of funding programmed to it. The other years, as we get closer to twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty, those numbers will increase by the nature of of projects coming online. Some of the major cost drivers again for for this capital budget is the land acquisition, as we were talking about, the ten million dollars. The new substation, the A M I mesh program, the transformers, which is an annual program, the rolling stock. And reliability upgrades, again, uh, year over year. It's a very robust bu- uh, budget. It takes into account, uh, as I like to affectionately call it, state of repair projects. Or reliability, this will ensure that we maintain reliability for our customers in the years to come, and that's why I'm very happy to stand by this budget. Along with adding the the additional stock. Any final questions? Vivek?
Maple Meadows project. If we do not get a clear title for that project, because it seems that title seems to be the issue, right?
Correct.
Will the project stop?
If we don't.
If we don't get a title.
If we don't get a clear title, we we will not, we we won't, but we won't make any investment on the property unless we have their time. Once again.
Yeah, so 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 that impacts our capability in the overall study.
It does, yeah, um. We should probably schedule, so I've scheduled um, Chet Talbot, um, an executive session next. Monday to talk about a couple topics with the V O C. And as one of them, what we should probably do, Vivek, is schedule one that talks about land specifically, so I can bring you up to speed on where we are in land. Because you're right, it's a, it's a foundational piece. Um, and and just given the nature of land acquisition.
Support, I have a question, like, oh, once a factory store, it's, you know, right, so.
It's.
I think it goes to what, this is a great point, it goes to like, strategy, that's an executive session topic of. How's it going with the negotiations and all that, so that's like.
Right, so we'll schedule a lot.
Right.
Good question, kind.
But yeah, it's it's very, very valid.
I I I think it's gonna take an active legislation in order to, in order to get a clear title. That timeline is significant, but if if it's requested, you put in and works through. Then it's gonna take a while, that that site is a former, well, you know, it's former landfill site.
Yeah.
No, it's not, no, no, no.
Former landfill site and.
It's a landfill.
It's a landfill. And and it's part of voters out of compliance, meaning it's it's not being monitored or tested right now, so.
But it is. So it, we'll we'll walk into the details of it, um. I think bottom line, yeah, we'll we'll give you more details that need to be done in executive session, yeah, but it's, you know, it it is a. It is of value to our L A, but it has a lot.
I just wondered, you you want to have approval, get the title, right?
We actually, so we approved last year the funds for maybe without those. But the reason, this is, this is the kind of the discussion we've had, we realistically won't really spend the bulk of that money for another two years. But there's work we have to do between now and then to allow us to do that. The ten million dollars are, if we walk through this, the ten million dollars are new properties that we have not yet shared with you and identified. And we'll do that in executive session. And therein, all.
Okay, yeah, so so there's no time against what you did.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah, that's, maybe it's already been allocated, it's already been budgeted. No incremental. Right. That's, he's talking just about the land?
Okay.
And 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 then, once the land's acquired, that that will impact.
Correct.
What asset goes on top of it?
What what would be the impact? If if we asked for itself, rather than, I, this is a blanket amount, I'm throwing, okay, you're saying. All right, ten million, I want, I want the ten million of land, okay, what? What would be the impact if you came to us at a later date and said, all right, I went too late, all right, I want. I I I have this deal closer to where I believe I can bring it. We can do a supplemental budget and add it, what is there, is there a detriment to that, or your, Ben's Ben's opinion? Um, from that perspective, because really, Karen picked up on that, right? Everyone's gonna pick it, you put ten million dollars in and in the A, they were spending, right? It looks like, oh my god, you spent ten million dollars, I mean, you spent ten million dollars. Um, is there a benefit to holding that? Approval of capital to a later date as you progress and say, I think I'm gonna get closer.
Let me, go ahead, yeah, so first and foremost, when we talk about Maple Meadows, that was approved by the board last year.
Correct.
So that money for that land, for the acquisition of that land, is already approved by this body. The additional ten million dollars is for new land.
Yes.
Beyond Maple Meadows, so I want to make sure that we have that clear in uh in terms of mission clarity. So what's already been approved in the budget the year before, that's already done. Going forward, the ten million dollars is for new property, and as if we go back to the slides for a second. Uh, the property, okay, so this is to develop and and operate it. So this slide here is above and beyond Maple Meadows, is that correct? It is. So I think what I was asking is, if we make that number zero, and then just to be incremental pieces. Um, right, that ten million dollars a budgeted number, um, and as we've had from previous discussions. Uh, before we do any land deal, I will come to the board, and I believe the C A D for approval text, give any one of those. Um. The other, the reason why I put it in this budget here, um, that's not a small number. And one of the things that we do, if you go to page five, is we look at this in terms of how we think about managing cash flow. Um, so why we could, we could potentially. I I think it is, um. Indicates to an external audience why we don't spend it, and we explain if somebody looks at the broader book and they understand the timeline behind it. Um, maybe we can, well. That there that there's some thought, that that we're not shooting from the hip, that there's a logic and thought process in terms of planning your budget and then I can get to. I think bottom line, I would leave it, but any kind of transaction we're gonna do, as we, that we did with three twenty-six dollar bill, we come to. For approval to you guys before we execute anything.
Some stuff up here, this ten million construction. Is this affect the rates?
No, it's not affect the rates.
No effect on rates?
No effect on rates.
Yeah, but just to add to the bobsaw there is. I think, and I think we would get this anyway, is I I would wanna see what's the, what's the whole strategy in land and then construction and then. Something is producing power, there's a battery, and what is that whole picture looking like in terms of what it's adding? In terms of load, I mean, in terms of supply, supply, and in terms of load management. Um, and seeing it all together, rather than just an amount for land in the abstract.
Well, it's not the abstract, because the asset that's still on top of it is also in that capital budget. So, but we we can put together a different package to kind of walk you guys through the the big picture, um, but. You know, at the end of the day, this is part of the the core strategy of in territory generation. This is, this goes back to solar, and this happens to be solar utility scale as opposed to solar on presidential.
I get that, so, you know, when you spend ten million, all you have is, well, I know it's a run number, you have land. You don't have generation, and you don't have, I mean, conceptually, ten million spent on incentives and um. Efficiency programs. I don't know, could it, could it achieve the same thing as whatever would go on that land? Those are the kinds of questions I have, just at a very high level. You know, because if you don't still tell me on land, you have ten million, I know we have to do it all, I know it's all the involved.
No, I hate this, you know, they're. But it's just the. This is not almost a pit, right? This, you know, we're making.
The lands are passive. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
If you, if the direction.
Good, sorry.
I I I think, um. Yeah, the overall, we, the, and and maybe this, I know in the subcommittee, we walked through a lot of detail of the territory generation. We looked at solar and carbon capture fuel cell and all sorts of other pieces, so there's a lot of analysis, so we can, we can dust off and and show to the bigger group. Um, one of the things that we in our territory, we have fifty-one square miles. Um, land is at a premium, and we are, you know, the the only pieces that are available to us. Um, have challenges associated with it. Part of the other piece, and I I think maybe, maybe we should ask this question again after we do the executive session, because then we can kind of.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea.
All all the different land pieces, because this, this isn't just a.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I don't, I don't mean.
There's a lot of work that the team's done to to kind of lay this out, but our view is land stimulation.
I don't, it sounds like we're not voting on the budget, right? Right, based on. So I'm hearing that from a few different directions, or is that? Then then, that's enough said, because I think it will help to hear in the executive session, um, it'll, that'll help. Any final questions?
Any other question? And.
All right, John, that finance payment for revenue. The payments for revenue, right, cost that calculated, or is that, is that similar?
Uh, there's, there's two parts of the payment for revenue. There's an above-the-line payment, um, which is tied to the twenty-year agreement. And the twenty-year agreement is calculated on two percent of that plant. Previous year, and then it's allocated amongst the four towns by kilowatt, kilowatt hour sales.
Okay, so that's, that's percent.
But that's the above-the-line piece?
Yes, the nine seventy-nine.
Yeah, fixed, okay, and then there's a, well, not fixed, because what you're, what you're gonna see is our, you know. Unlike twenty-seven to twenty-twenty, where the asset base was pretty flat, I mean, pretty flat, but number didn't move on it. What you're seeing in discussion here, given the size of the capital budget, is the net plan is going to increase. So that number is going to increase, and it's tied into, it's reflected in the twenty twenty-five budget, the operating budget. The second element is the below-the-line payment, and that calculation is tied to kilowatt hour sales in aggregate. Times a rate, um, and so that, we're back to Ray's comment or some discussion that I think I mentioned to you. As load grows, that number goes up because it's tied to kilowatt hour sales. So, um, in both of those cases, well, so one's tied to net plant and one's tied to kilowatt hour sales. And a working assumption that we have is that the electrification is driving load growth and asset base, and hence that number is forecasted to an improvement.
Great. Yeah, the twenty, the twenty-year agreement was negotiated with, between the board. And I have one of my, as representative of that, one of the gentlemen at the time, along with Jim Stewart from Wilmington. And Bob King from Wilmington, when negotiated the twenty-year agreement. Because there were, at the time, there were votes to the Wilmington with the law, and we, we, um, district. Which, in essence, there would have been no winners in that case, on either side. Um, so we negotiated that, that the above-the-line payment was uh, was negotiated. It had, it had to go for special legislation through the Commonwealth to get that, uh, which we did, which was, sorry, we appeared. That room, the time we were for the hearing, the room was filled with people, we were like, what's going on here? Turned out they were hearing a dog racing, it was the same time. Anyway, but that's, and that's a agreement that was back in the early.
Ninety-nineties. Yeah.
That that was, uh. And it's been good, in a sense.
It was renewed back in twenty twenty.
And it's been continued, every ten years it comes up for a new one.
Yeah, it's great, I just had one question, Walter, if you can stick out line four zero eight, page seventy-five of your book.
By the best book.
Yeah. The page one here, page seventy-five. For. Line forty, uh, line four zero eight. It said that the actual amount. Twenty twenty-four is gonna be twenty-eight percent higher.
Yeah, it did. Yeah, I have that in my possession.
So I mean, like, you know, payments to town are pretty predictable.
Yeah.
You know, you know exactly what your loads are gonna be and net plant is gonna be, there should be no surprises. Why is it twenty-eight percent higher? Why is it thirty-eight percent higher?
Okay, that thirty-eight percent is the above-the-line, that line is the above-the-line payment, and it's tied to the estimate of net plants. So it's not, it's not tied to the kilowatt.
Right, so, but, but you knew what the net plant is, in terms of the budget, we knew what the net plant is gonna be, and the budget would tell what the net plant is gonna be.
Well, no, 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 we don't, so, we don't know exactly what net plant's gonna be, because it's not until, while we have it in the budget. We don't put it onto the balance sheet until we actually commission the asset.
Okay, so, so you're saying your budget is based on the net at, at of the day?
Correct.
And then when you spend in the year, you, you actually add to the net plan?
Well, we, correct, yeah, that's, that basically goes to the net plant, exactly right. And so, so it's not until we commission the asset, or we put it into service, with the exception of transformers. That, that becomes, the net plant calculation is driven by the balance sheet at the end of the year, whatever that is, so it's what we actually.
So the net plan increased from the amount you originally had in the budget, because you, you actually spent the money?
Correct, well, the net plan, we spent the money, the net plan actually went out.
Went into the field as opposed to being in the start room.
Which, which is on a different part of the balance sheet, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, because I, I just thought it should have been predictable.
Yeah, no, but it's, but that, but you, you, and I looked at, when you looked at it, I looked at it too, like, wait a minute, why is that? But it's the two percent calculation, not, not the kilowatt-hour sales to running itself, below-line payment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, action items, we're gonna do a little bit of analysis on heavy duty rolling specs. We're gonna put together a, uh, summary of personnel. And was there a third, I think, someone else, was there a third item that you guys wanted, before we approve the budget? We don't do two main items, right, and we'll talk about land.
Yep. And, um, this is the, um. Again, buying land in the long-duration battery, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, right.
Which is associated with that, right, um, there's some explanation around that, like.
Great, that long-duration battery is, uh, is a product we talked about back in May, and we haven't decided, so we'll put it in the budget. Um, we're running through some analysis, right, and then discussions right now, and that is gonna be heavily dependent upon, um, some, uh. Some legislation that will potentially get passed here in the next month and a half. And I'll, I'll send you guys a little bit of email more on that, but we're, uh, scheduled, so it's a whole, it's a lot of things that are percolating that. Um, on November twenty-third, our intention is to have kind of an open house. Hundred and thirtieth celebration, but to invite the legislatures to help them, to encourage them to. Relative to Maple Meadows, we basically kind of lay out all the plans we're doing, um, so they actually can see what we're doing, that we're tied to eleven-thirtieth. But that project is really heavily dependent upon, um, some state grants. And the state grants have been applied for, but they haven't been funded yet, so that's our, our goal is to encourage them to do that funding. That, that's the long, that's the hundred-hour battery system.
Yeah.
And that's what's different, and then, we'd actually, as, as we had talked about before, we would own that asset as opposed to do a shared savings bond line. Now, we haven't, we, you know, we, we're working through the analysis on it, um, and looking at, it doesn't make sense for us to do it, but we'd put it in the budget under the assumption that the analysis takes forward. We wouldn't actually execute against that, which is the, uh, which is what we did in the motion back in May. We'd have to come back to the board for any actual expenses, in terms of assets. That's what that was back to.
So, do you wanna have a meeting between now and the regular November meeting to look at these things, having?
I think, I think, yeah.
And the other piece we could do is people have a chance to review the, the charter stuff, and come back, if anybody has suggestions. Hey, if it goes, uh, like Supreme Court, adding another five commissioners or six commissioners, or chomping back the three. We're having to be informed by, you know, somebody, so we are currently scheduled for the nineteenth.
I didn't get it for him, I was enough, he was. You want to keep going?
I have a question, I have my, my favorite question.
Oh, yeah, your favorite question.
My favorite question's coming out.
No, no, he's got a different question.
My question is on page, I'm on page seventy-nine. We got the, we got. We got a little bit in the C A B budget of thirty thousand, of which, one thousand, it's under the twenty-year agreement. That's, uh, like a bit, that was under the twenty-year agreement, so we have twelve thousand.
There we go.
I'm assuming the board has ten thousand. And we spent twelve thousand, so I don't know, that's all the board at this point spent twelve thousand, and I see the increase to thirty-one, thirty-one, one forty.
Those are the jackets. Nice color.
So we, we will answer this question, because we, thank you for the. We have the data.
Okay, so, each year, we budget both the cab and the board fifteen thousand dollars separately.
Each.
Each, which gets you the total to thirty thousand dollars between the two bonds.
But under the twenty-year agreement, the, the C A B is allocated twenty thousand.
I think it's fifteen, though, I'm not sure.
Fifteen, we went back, it's fifteen, yeah, one five, they're both one five.
How much does they use every year of that?
Oh, I got, I got.
The twenty, that's, I didn't look at it, so.
But yet, we're not spending it, so he's gonna come up with a, Karen's, we're budgeting thirty thousand, we're not spending it.
We did this year. We did this.
You want better cookies?
Well, you know, we, we have some money to spend this, I mean. Staff is here, why can't that staff be charged?
We don't expense.
Well, that's actually, so, exactly right, one of the things that we're in the habit of having on the C A B is allocating, um. So, if, good, so the question was, how much have we spent for both, respectively, the board and the cap?
Right.
I went back to two thousand nineteen, if you'll, you'll entertain me for a moment.
Good.
In two thousand nineteen, the board, and we'll start with the board, and we'll move to the cap, the board spent a whopping zero dollars. In two thousand twenty, again, the board spent a whopping.
Covid, that's why.
Yep, zero dollars.
No conference.
No conference, two thousand twenty-one spent one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, in twenty-two, six thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. In twenty-three, it went down a little bit, one thousand eight hundred dollars, and in twenty-four, twelve thousand three hundred and two dollars. Now, that is as a result of a bunch of board members going to the NEPA conference up in New Hampshire, which is everything, yep.
And iPads.
And iPads. The cap, again, going back to two thousand nineteen, we'll call it ninety-nine hundred dollars, twenty-twenty, ten thousand one twelve. Twenty-twenty-one, six thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Yeah. We're going to your meetings, you're not coming to ours anymore, we're going to your meetings.
Twelve thousand, five thou, or fifty-seven hundred and sixty-eight hundred, again, some of it is travel, some of it is assigned labor to.
Well, that's the key thing, so in the C A B, we were pretty diligent in terms of assigning some of the labor that went to doing the minutes and the meetings, et cetera. We have not been as diligent on that on the board's side, so that's the difference.
So, so, the spend really is, because only one or two of us ever go to NEPA.
Yeah.
It's that, it's really on the minutes and the.
Yeah, the hours.
And the York County paddocks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does that answer your question, Phil?
I'd really like to see you spending my.
Well, you're, you're spending the money of the board this year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you keep adding esteemed executives, secretaries, so that should ought to be a bonus right there.
Yeah, right.
Again, I, I, I think we should up that budget, because I do think that the, um. Nice jackets, spreading light that deserves, that leather print R L D is in the budget, I'll, I'll put that into. Spread it.
Um, this nineteen, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, Pam.
Yeah, sorry, um, as much as I love talking about jackets, um, I, I have to hop on a plane in about, uh, ten minutes, so. I wanted to let you all know that I'm gonna have to leave shortly, but if we wanna get to the last item on the agenda in terms of. That vote, I can, I can certainly hang on for enough time to, to cover that. Or you can vote without me.
Yeah, um, yeah, do power supply would be great. Um, this power supply, thank you, Pam. I'll, I'll do this, maybe just real quick, if we have more questions again, um, just go to the slide, the next slide, uh, two, three. Okay, um, this is a wind project. This, this is a replacement for a solar project where the project got canceled. And as I think we mentioned in past meetings, um, solar and wind projects, most of them get built, but not all of them get built. And so, um, we had a, this was a, a group, we were part of a, so this particular project is a wind project, it's a system that already exists. Next era ended up buying the system, um, the solar project was a next era project, they ended up canceling that project. So, um, we were not part of the original wind deal that was done back in two thousand nineteen, um, as R M L D. Um, but basically, this would allow us to, um, purchase at favorable rates, favorable pricing. Uh, about a thousand megawatt-hours a year, now, a thousand megawatt-hours a year is out of six hundred and fifty, six hundred and seventy thousand megawatt-hours. It doesn't move the needle at all, um, but the price is good, and there's, that roll-through is a right-of-firth refusal. And the system gets repowered in two thousand forty-one. Uh, I'll answer more questions on it, but it's a, it's, it's a very small, simple, um, project that adds to our portfolio. And it was part of, it's a consortium of, uh, another dozen, so M L Ps that are part of this project.
So we'll get the certificates?
Absolutely, we get the certificates last, last month, and that's our, so, one of the things you guys should understand, starting in two thousand thirty. Any certificates that we want to retire to be compliant with, um, the twenty-twenty-one budget bill, need to be purchased with associated energy. So any power supply deal we have going forward, we've been doing this for a while, um, we only buy associated certificates. There's no, there'll be no more trading, you know, buying on the open market and retiring, so yes.
Plus, and that's, you know, it's not gonna be allowed, or.
Will be allowed, legally, it'll be, but you can do what you want, but it won't, it won't qualify for your compliance, um, so that you wouldn't.
That's people in the industry.
Yeah, it, it already, it was, it was. Still isn't, it is, yeah, it's a big industry, anyways, um, it's a, we wanna participate in it, um, it's, it's a small part of our portfolio. And it's winning, and it happens to people that like the path. It's a little, no, because, like, and it's, and it's, questions, I know it's quick and fast, but it's. So slick policy.
I'm moved that Assistant Advisor Board recommend that the board and commissioner is willing to accept the general manager's recommendation to execute a contract with. Granted reliable power for energy, including associated certificates from the system and facility in New Hampshire.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, question, we've tried to do damage to the environment, but.
No, it, it, it's not a hike, so, no, we haven't, it's a system that's been in place since two thousand eleven.
Yeah.
We haven't done any, we have, we, if the numbers, we, we have not enough time to do any.
They've got the way is on those machines at home?
Same, yeah, yeah, well, the good news is you can, that's actually after the real site, um, you'll have to go to the trees to collect the. There, there, there've been a pretty reliable system.
I'm moved that the board commissioned the recommendation of the Assistant Advisor Board. Uh, and also the recommendation of the Survivor and the General Manager, who vote to accept the, uh, General Manager's recommendation to execute a contract with. Granted reliable power for energy, including associated certificate from existing wind facility in New Hampshire. Do we, do we put the name of the, the entity in there? We did, we say existing wind facility, should we say existing from wind granted reliable instead of existing? We add that after the word existing?
We can add granted, yeah.
Yeah, let's add that after. Existing wind facility, wind, uh, dash, grant reliable.
Grant reliable is fine, that's good, yeah, thank you for the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you get that? Did I add a couple things in there, okay?
Yep.
So again, added the recommendation, General Manager, also the name of the entity.
Second amendment.
Let's start the main motion, sorry.
A rare provoke.
Second, second as.
That's it, provoke, provoke.
Go to poll votes.
Miss Piscina.
Report, aye.
Just pull the right.
Pam, that's the like a tie.
Flight safety. Thank you.
I appreciate you commentating.
Thank you.
Flight safely.
I can grab that. We're at twenty-six. Did you guys?
I feel like somebody had a constant on the eighteen, so I'll tell them I had it here.
We have any?
Or we could do the twelve, you know, of the course, the fourteen, I mean, twelve is, yeah, the two weeks. It's, but the, the focus is on budget, on the, on the twelve, aren't you? I'd like to be, did it work for you guys at the same time? Between the twelve? Six?
Yeah.
Dennis, do you think just?
I can't make the twelfth question, I mean, I mean, everybody asked.
Thirteen, fourteenth, eleven?
Thirteen, fourteen, can't make the fourteenth.
We can't make the change, right?
Thirteen, fourteen.
Thirteen is the only night I don't, I don't have a meeting that week. Really, you could make the thirteenth?
November thirteenth is the only night I don't have a meeting that week. So you can, like, party, like, we can do the thirteenth if we wanted to learn.
Thirteen's fine.
Thirteen work, yeah, can we do it here, Dennis, just to be consistent with budget?
Uh, yeah, I'll, um, get, uh, permission again.
You wanna do six, six thirty? Six? Six? We're going here, yeah, just because we're about it, just because we're also rotating.
We get that good screen, question will always.
The reason we do it here is we, by the twenty-year agreement, we just want to rotate these to balance.
But we're here, but we're here today.
I, I, I don't care either way.
No, I think, I think one of the, we're used to do separate, we do one meeting, and then we would do the.
Yeah, because we used to do the calendar budget on one day and the operating budget on a separate night, and one of those two meetings had to be in a separate town every.
And the other one was back.
Half the meetings for the budget, one has to be, half the meetings have to be outside of running, so we did two, one.
So we qualify the night for being half outside, okay?
Yeah.
We can, okay, we could be here, ready, I don't care.
Well, here's the other ethic consideration, is, is the reason we're doing the executive session next Monday is because you couldn't, you couldn't do it here for some reason, right?
Yeah.
So then, if you needed one next month, we would be able to do it.
That's a good point.
Thirteen, in ready, six o'clock, how's that work? No, right.
Is that, is that instead of the twenty-sixth, or in addition to the twenty-sixth?
In addition to.
Okay.
Well, you wanna do the executive session on the twenty-eighth, has some topics, and then the one on the thirteenth is a joint, and you do land? Because you're gonna do land in both words.
We could do that. So.
So we'll just put it.
Yeah, we, it says we're all gonna be together, we can do joint, um, we can do the land on the thirteenth, because you need to have the land anyways. And it's part of the budget discussion anyways, that's fine with me, okay, good suggestion.
Yeah, but one, I have a quick question, I heard about you for a, um, large building energy reporting, is it re-mandating coming down, what is, what is that?
Um, the, the request is by one of the state agencies to have the, um, electricity supplier apply, uh, supply data.
Yep.
To the state, okay. And the touches behind it is, if they really wanted, they should, the, the, the concern is the confidentiality of load data, and for, for some of the larger industrials, for example.
Yeah.
That information is tied to production, and so, they, we don't share it unless we are authorized to. So anyways, it's a, it's a battle between two state agencies.
Okay, but are we being asked to provide data from large customers? Have we taken a position on it, it's where I'm going to here, or have we taken some?
The position that me has taken is not to support it, if they, if the state wants it, they should get it from the individual companies. And not to the other companies.
It's the engine, take a little position. You know, we, I mean. What's that about?
I, it's the same thing like having your phone, you know, you wanna be on phone data from the company, but it's between the servers, they can't do that, they can't do. But it's not like you have to hand out customer data.
Yeah, I, I just heard it in today, actually, and I was curious what it was, and it's, it's, you know, it probably doesn't have like extreme reality. It's not our battle, I mean, we're, we're involved.
It's not our battle, I mean, we're, we're involved. Okay, good. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to season advisory board adjourn radio session.
Paul Stevens?
Nice and small, I.
Don't tell her.
Two more die.
You may stop me on. I'll move to adjourn, you have a, you board commissioners during the session. Second, Mr. Piscina?
Report, aye.
No, I. Pam is in the air. Sound kind of sick, yes.
Recording stopped.